I would call this meeting their order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM, may be recorded by other local media. Please rise the political leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday night edition of the Select Board Show. I'm your host, Mr. Kenzo. Thank you for coming. Mr. O'Leary, we'll start with you. One member reports, holding your business.
All right, a couple of, a few things. First and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Bill Smith. And when I say his name, I smile. Billy Smith, he's Billy to me, I'm Stevie to him. Virtually known him my entire life. I would say my adolescent and adult life, but I don't know whether, whether he went from adolescent to adult. But I've known Billy virtually my whole life. He quite a, quite a character and quite a guy and quite a public servant. For those that know Bill, who was a, which was a large segment of this community, he did serve on this board. He served in the Community Planning Commission. He served in the Finance Committee, but more importantly, he served with the DPW. He served as a firefighter. He served as a lieutenant in the Police Department, and he spent his entire life, and he operated a local business here virtually his entire life. Ran a business or runs a business with his family that has extraordinary reputation, helps so many people in this community from a business standpoint, a personal standpoint, a political standpoint. And I can honestly say, and again, Billy and I have, have worked together on a number of issues, been strongly in opposition to one another on a number of issues, but always ended up with a smile, a handshake, and a cup of coffee. And I can honestly say that that type of dialogue and working together is needed more today than ever. And he exemplified the ability to be in polar opposites with you on one issue and with you the next day on the next issue. And he exemplified how to do it. And again, he was a polarizing figure to some members of this community, but I always considered him a friend. And I'm going to miss his, it wasn't too long ago, he was calling me on a regular basis, offering me his, his opinion on things. He was never shy about that. And his consternation with my position on things and, you know, trying to convince me to do other things otherwise. And, but again, always disarming with a smile. He would get his blood pressure up and turn beet red and leave the room. And it could be, it could be six months, six days, six weeks, or six, six minutes. He'd always come back with a smile and say, "All right, Stevie, let's talk about this." You know, "Okay, Stevie, you know, you're nuts, you know, and you're wrong, I'm right." But he was a, he always looked out for the little guy. He was always concerned about the, the scenes in this community and what they could afford and not afford. He was a penny pincher when it came to spending, but if it was a matter of principle, he'd spend tens of thousands of dollars to prove the point. So anyway, his, his passing is a sad day for the community. He's a great public servant, a good friend, and he's going to be solely missed. So, you know, to Linda and Brad and Dan and Greg and Debbie, you know, our condolences to his extended family, who are still in town, too. Again, my personal, insues personal heartfelt condolences. His services are going to be, I believe, Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00 at Crossville Funeral Hall and the funeral at 1:00 at the Union Congregational Church. And I'm sure there'll be a good contingency of the community onto fruition of farewell. So, going to be solely missed, and I'm certainly going to miss the conversation and the, and the banter back and forth. He was a good friend. Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. We had a capital improvement planning committee meeting. I don't know if you're going to bring up any of what was discussed at that to fill the board in. Most importantly, we have some capital suggestions that need to be addressed in relation to heating, ventilating, and air conditioning in the library, the police station, and the third meeting house, which are all of constant concern right now and need to be addressed in short order, which is going to be a substantial amount of money. And I think the town administrator will probably address the library. We had appropriated some money June of 2023 to address the situation, but information is coming back that's going to be substantially more than anticipated and how we move forward. I'm sure he'll fill us in. But I just think the board needs to be aware that we have some infrastructure issues in relation to current facilities that need to be addressed, that aren't going to go away, and we're better to address them before it becomes a crisis situation. And we're talking, you know, in excess of a million dollars between the three projects, probably. So, you know, how we fund that and I'm sure the Capital Improvement, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Capital Improvement Committee will, will be making some recommendations moving forward based upon the assessment of our professional staff. So I'm sure the town administrator will address the library one at some point. The cross-country skiing at Hillview is fantastic. We were out there today, so the conditions are terrific. And then the only other thing I want to ask my colleagues to, Mr. Chairman, again, I don't know, because I haven't conversed with you, if you're planning on bringing this up, but the MBTA Communities Act and the court decision and the emergency guidelines that were put out, you know, my understanding is, is that there's a February 13th deadline for an action plan to be filed by communities such as ours in order to provide town meeting to come into compliance, if that's what they choose to do. If we don't file that on a timely basis, you'll be out of compliance. So I believe under the new guidelines, for the new guidelines that were issued and the extension of time that was issued to come into compliance, which is now July, we still have to file an action plan by February 13th. And when I say "we," it's actually, as it turns out, it was us before, meaning the board had to do it previously. It's now the town administrator position under the new guidelines that has to do it. And I think he should be doing it with some guidance from us as to whether or not we should ask him to file an action plan or not. We certainly need some input from the Planning Commission, and I know they had a brief discussion Tuesday, but I don't know exactly if anything came out of it. But the timeline is short. There's only 30 days from the date that the emergency regulations will put into place. You have 30 days to file your action plan, so that's February 13th. So I think on the February 3rd agenda, we should be prepared to give some guidance to the town administrator as to whether or not we believe in an action plan and what that action plan should be, should be filed or not. So I don't know what the chairman's preference is going to, is as far as bringing it up, but we shouldn't just sit here and not take any action. So I'm just suggesting that we...
I'll add a few thoughts when I get to me.
Yeah, okay, so it's all. And other than that, I'll serve as the chairman. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary? I'll hold for the... Okay. Mr. Massey here. No, I, just a couple of things, actually, I just want to bring up, I actually have a ton of things, but I was going to probably for a couple of meetings. I know we have a hearing tonight. Reddick Municipal Lake, I met with them on Friday, last Friday, just to discuss our status on North Reading and how we're progressing, potential project, potential ideas. So that went well. Some other ideas, I asked them how feasible it could be. So just continuing to have a great relationship with Reddick Municipal. The YMCA, we are meeting next week, again, to continue to work on these discussions so I can continue to bring something to fruition to this board. The Facilities Master Plan, I voted to send intergenerational center design to conceptual design. I think this board has spoke before about potential other options that could serve those needs. We did talk about, great recommendation by Mr. Hall to Torsom Buildings, Torsom Intergenerational Centers, Torsom Senior Centers, to see more along with taste of what we'd like. I don't know what's going on with the report for that Facilities Master Plan. I don't, I don't know how long it's been worked on, but it hasn't been discussed. Route 28, so this is something I've brought up multiple times, and I'm hoping if I can continue to bring it up, that it'll get on the agenda at some point for us to have a fruitful conversation about where we see that vision. But I'm hoping that this board here can encourage our town administrator to inquire with the state on the potential funding for Route 28 improvements. I think I've mentioned it multiple times about how either side, left, right, and over Reading, how their stretch looks compared to ours. I think, you know, with that, I spoke with Reddick Municipal on the potential, they would actually invite the opportunity to want to send wires underground. They would, you know, I envision a Route 28 with no power lines. I envision a Route 28 with tree lines. Regardless, I brought that idea up to Reddick Municipal, which is very broad, and they would actually prefer to have their wires go underground, certainly for liability reasons. Lastly, I just want to bring up One Central Street. I again ask, this is another item that I brought up in new business that I will continue to bring up until it gets on the agenda, but how we're temporarily using this property. So we spend taxpayer dollars and, you know, we should be using this property temporarily in some sort or have some sort of idea. I just don't know where that property stands within our plan. We should find a way to use that, if not find a way to, to rent some of the land to make some sort of money back. Last, I'm sorry, final thing, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Everything's the final thing. Town meeting, the motions that we get when we go up to the podium, they don't say if it's unanimous or what the board voted for. So I think the last couple of meetings, I've been tripped up on, you know, you guys might remember off the top of your head, it'd be nice to just have, you know, select board four to one or whatnot. Thank you.
Also, would like to give my condolences to the Smith family. And Housing Authority, just want to, you know, update some things going on there. We have a new director, Catherine Galant, who is also the Reading Director. So she shares both Reading and North Reading. She is quite a go-getter. She's been really great in the five years, five and a half years I've sat on that board, actually longer, I would say, before the select board. Very little gets done there. The state doesn't like to give North Reading any money because they don't think we need any. So unfortunately, you know, a lot of things have been in disrepair, as a lot of people here know. But Katie has been doing a fantastic job in the short time she's been there. All new storm doors have been put in. Sidewalks will begin in the spring, new sidewalks and pathways, and a new fire panel will be going in. And she's just been allotted, she's told, you know, a nice little chunk of money that we can get some other things done with. So just so everybody knows, she's just doing a great job, seeing a lot of progress happening there. Also, would like to mention this past Monday, not only Martin Luther King Day, but also a new president sworn in, President Trump, 47th president. And just wanted to highlight an executive order of getting fired workers who did not take the experimental vaccine, who were fired, to be immediately brought back to work and given back pay. I will be contacting Representative Jones and Senator Tar to see if we can follow suit with Massachusetts. That would affect residents here right in this town. So just wanted to highlight that.
I'll just add a little bit following what Mr. O'Leary said. So I briefly spoke to Chair David Rublau from the Community Planning Commission, and they are, they had a meeting yesterday or two days ago? I've been working around the clock. It was either this Tuesday. They had a meeting this week.
Every day is the same.
And again, for the purposes of at least making sure, like, you know, it's two steps. The step one is to re-up what was done a few years ago, where the only difference was that the select board authorized Chairman Eppely to sign it. Now they want either a mayor or a TA. And it is confusing because the whole thing goes through CPC except this, the way it's written, where the select board actually is the one that signs the letter of, like a letter of intent that we're trying to come up with a plan.
It's an action plan.
An action plan. And there's another meeting, your next meeting is February 4th, I believe, Mrs. McKnight.
Yes, yes.
So worst case scenario, our meeting's on the 3rd, and if we don't get clarification on, you know, it's, I think I see where the CPC is going with it. And worst case, if we have to have a very quick virtual meeting to give guidance to Mr. Bill Burdo, you know, because I'm not sure why they did that, because it's like kind of unfair, but, you know, the right thing to do is to give guidance. That's what we'll do. But, you know, to your end, because we want to make sure that we get that teed up and then we can just debate all the way to June meeting again, but at least we check a box.
Mr. Chairman, a question on that. So the emergency regulations somehow, they were an emergency, but the emergency regulations, so that now triggers, that it goes into the select board or governmental body, town administrator? Is that how it triggers it?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure whether the regulations stipulate that. What I'm working off of is an updated action plan form that two-plus years ago indicated as signatory for the chief elected official, CEO, and in this most recent iteration now says mayor in the town, and mayor in the city and town manager, town administrator in a town, which is unusual for that type of document to say that. So I don't know whether the regulations prescribe that, but the form prescribes it.
Okay. Maybe there's an opportunity. Is every other town under the same understanding, or are the planning boards making this decision?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think anything changes the planning board's role in recommending a warrant article at town meeting. It's the form that seems to have varied.
And it doesn't do anything.
Only for communities, and this is, as I understand, and I'm looking to the town planner, who may have left the room with issues, only for communities that had filed an action plan but not a compliance plan. So a compliance plan would include an approved bylaw that would be sent both to the Attorney General to be approved and then to Executive Office of Housing and Living Living Services. We didn't get to that step, as we know, but we fit in this category of now being subject to this new form.
But either way, again, my update is that Mr. Rublau, they are having that discussion, heading in that direction, and then we'll take it from there. So again, so, okay, Mr. Bill Burdo, move on.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is proclamation for Mary...
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I stepped over.
Okay. Any public comment?
I'm back. We've missed you.
Everyone wants to get up first.
I'm missed being here. I know this, Pat Fillmore, 24 Field Press Harris, and I know this is a bit asked before, but public comment. Now, we come here to hear what's going on at the meeting, to voice our opinion on, to say, the town meeting or the rail trail or whatever that is, but we have no time to talk about it. Maybe if we pick up the transcript and we sit there and try to figure our way through it or something, we might know what's going on. But we'd like to hear from you before we start asking questions. I mean, like...
What are you talking about, Mrs. Fillmore? Public comment or public hearing?
Public comment.
So a public comment, it would just be a comment, not a question?
But we might have a comment about, say, you know, Article 1 in this next week's town meeting, or we might have a question about...
Well, that is a public hearing, so you'll get it there.
I know, but we don't always get it. I mean, public comment is always before, and I attended a meeting the other night on Zoom that the same thing happened about the building and we, you know, the intergenerational. And I, public comment was before anything was even discussed. We don't have comments unless we hear what's being discussed.
And I can address that, that the reason it was switched is because Chairman Eppely got complaints almost every after meeting that public comment's at the end and your meetings are running too late, and now no one wanted to stick around. So actually, the opposite effect that, well, she wanted to wait till the end for that, but then people are saying, "I didn't feel like staying till 10:30." So just so you know why it was changed.
Right, and I understand that totally. I mean, sometimes if you don't put a stop to public comment, like you do in the beginning, you're, "Okay, we're going to start the public comment now and pick up the meeting." You can shut off public comment if it's held, you know, after things have been discussed. You've done it before. You've done it, you know, even before anything is, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just saying, I would really like to be able to hear and understand what's going on more so than what I hear and understand.
I can tell you I'm going to take it under consideration.
All right, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you, I just wanted to comment on that really quick. I completely agree with Mrs. Fillmore. Brought this up a couple of meetings ago, that maybe there should be a public comment at the beginning and at the end to be able to digest the information with your comment. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to give you a little perspective as to, there was, there was a time when there was no public comment at a select board's meeting. Select board meetings are for the board to deliberate amongst themselves, task, opinions from boards, committees, professional staff, and others. These are deliberations that we have to do in public. It does not necessarily allow for engagement of the public during the discussion and deliberations of the board. So the board implemented a policy of once a month, originally, once a month, a public comment period where any member of the public could come and offer praise, criticism, ideas, or consideration, and it was never utilized to have a debate back and forth or full discussion of whatever was brought up. It was like, "Oh, that's a good idea. Put that on the next agenda, or thank you for your comments," you know, or, okay. So it was not, it was just a placeholder for people to come at least once a month to come before the board and offer their comments and input. Never has it been a practice for the board's deliberations to include just random public input and comments, because then it just became unruly. So that's, that's the genesis of...
Well, thank you for the background and thank you for the comment, Mr. Massey. Mr. Scalado, next, he raised his hand first.
Mike Scalado, 240 Marcus Lanning, 102. I just want to give you, mention a few community events that's taking place this weekend and a donation drive. So the Friends of North Reading Council on Aging presents publisher Henry Quinnlum this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. at the Edith O'Leary Senior Center. It's a free event for all ages. And then on Sunday, there's a free community breakfast sponsored by the North Reading Knights of Columbus at St. Teresa's Parish at 10:00 a.m. And then for the donation drive, this Mia Love Alaver is a young lady that lives in North Reading. She is doing a community service for an organization called Ruth's Way. Just to give you some background on Ruth's Way, they believe in empowering women on their recovery journey by providing them with safe, supportive, and dignified space to rebuild their lives. The supplies of Pope Initiative is dedicated to meeting the ongoing need for essential cleaning and hygiene supplies, ensuring that their sober homes remain welcoming. So Mia is collecting the following items: laundry pods, water detergent, hand soap, trash bags, paper towels, and toilet paper. So if you'd like to donate these items, you can drop them off at 17 Mead Road. There is a black and yellow bin in the front of her garage, and the date of the drive is between January 15th and March 15th. Thank you.
Can you repeat what those needs were?
What's that?
Can you repeat what those needs were?
Yep. Laundry pods, detergent, hand soap, trash bags, paper towels, and toilet paper.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Jeff Yu, 427 Park Street. Just with regard to the public comment, all right, I'm going to go back to the Jovino days, okay? Everybody had a comment about anything that was on the agenda, okay? They weren't allowed to discuss that item, all right? Just like I did here, he, you know, shared some information to the public so that, to be informative. And so that was the basic purpose and premise of a public comment. If there was a hearing or an issue that had to be talked later on, that was on the agenda for tonight, okay, they can bring up something coming down the future, might say, they might have a question or not on that, but that was the basic premise of a public comment. That's how, that's how I know. I don't know if it's codified or not, you know, that's just a policy idea, but that's the way it has been always in the past, as far as I know. Thank you.
Mr. Yu, anyone else here who wants to make a comment? Mr. Bill, anyone on Zoom?
I'm not seeing any requests.
Okay. So we can move on to the next agenda item?
Yes. The next agenda item is proclamation for Mary Trullo Day, Trullo Day here in North Reading. Ms. Trullo was recently presented the Boston Post Kane at the Thanksgiving dinner back in November. There is a planning effort underway to present and recognize her 100th birthday, which was, I think, over this past weekend. Unfortunately, she's recovering from illness out of state right now, so there isn't a specific date presented, but we were hoping to have the board both read and approve the proclamation so that once she's well enough for a presentation to take place, the chair or somebody else could attend the presentation, which would probably be at her home, as we've done in the past. I'm not going to offer too much about Ms. Trullo, because I think it's explained pretty well in the proclamation, so I'll turn it back over to you. I don't know if you want to take the motion and then read the proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I move to declare January 19, 2025, as Mary Trullo Day and to read the attached proclamation.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll go ahead and read this note. Whereas Mary Jenny Trullo was born on January 19, 1925, and has been a resident of Ullgie Park since 1960, and whereas Mary grew up in Hall Quarry, Bar Harbor, Maine, with her two sisters, before her family moved to North Reading and settling into houses in the old Ullgie Farm of town, and whereas Mary has two daughters, Linda and Mary Ann, who went to the North Reading School, and whereas Mary worked in the corporate office of Stockton Shop for more than 25 years, and whereas Mary spent her retirement years for her grandchildren, caring for her grandchildren, visiting family diligently, keeping her home and property pristine well into her 90s, and whereas Mary received the Boston Post Kane Award in November 2024, recognition of her being the oldest citizen in North Reading. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of North Reading, so we're hereby proclaim January 19, 2025, to be Mary Jenny Trullo Day, and urge all citizens of North Reading to join us in wishing Mary a happy 100th birthday. Congratulations. Wonder if it's a good, it's a good day. Thank you. And then, yeah, as soon as we have something formal, I'd be more than happy to deliver it, and we'll all sign it after.
Yeah, it's a good time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, there was some discussion about whether a family member would be able to join us, but I believe that ended up not being able to be arranged for tonight, but I know there was intention to try to be here if they could.
Okay. Next agenda, Mr....
Sure. Through, Mr. Chairman, we had on there a presentation for electronic voting for the town meeting.
Number eight.
Coming. Sorry, did I skip over? Keep moving ahead.
I want to go over them too, so I...
I'm trying to rush it. So this is the acceptance of a gift for the Council on Aging, both for our martial arts classes and for, and for mindfulness series as well. So we again thank the Friends of the Council on Aging for their donation to try to continue to support programming, low or no-cost programming for our seniors through the senior center, either at the center or at Alder's Gate, which I know is being well utilized. I believe a motion has been prepared. If you saw an earlier motion that only included the martial arts classes, we learned after the publication of the packet that the mindfulness donation was received as well. And the department head can accept the donation, but really it needs to be approved by the select board before it can be expended. So that's why we have the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept gifts from the Friends of the Council on Aging in the amount of $2,500 for 50 martial arts classes and $600 for mindfulness series.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just martial arts and mindfulness, so we can... Just martial arts and mindfulness. So we can defend ourselves and meditate. This is good, you know? Learn how to control our emotions, I guess, and defend ourselves at the same time. Fantastic. And again, grateful appreciation to the Friends of the Council on Aging, who have been around for a number of years and doing wonderful work and supporting the programming at the Senior Center for a number of years. They certainly deserve our support and our appreciation for all that they do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the next agenda item, we're actually not prepared to have it, so we're gonna skip it over. However, Mr. Gilberto's gonna give a brief explanation of why.
Sure. Just to give an explanation, we had... We learned, I think, the day after the last select board meeting, that the Attorney General had approved the bylaw to allow us to use electronic voting equipment. We read into a few things. We had every intent of trying to use the equipment for Monday evening. We thought it would be a good meeting to try to take advantage of the equipment, with the vendor being present to help us the first time. That's part of the contract that we have with them. Unfortunately, a couple of things conspired against us, one of which is that we won't have our physical clickers, if you will, here in possession. There's a final step that needs to take place with them that hasn't happened. The vendor offered to provide us to them without that step happening, and that's putting the covering on them that make them unique to town of North Reading, and also make clear what buttons we're using on the clicker. They offered to send them to us and have us put the covers on the clicker, but we opted not to take advantage of that, because there's a thousand of them that are coming. So they also offered us a loner system. But to be upfront with folks, we opted to decline it, because we would rather they do the first test with our system at town meeting. So I don't think it's worthwhile to go through a demonstration tonight, because we're not gonna be doing it on Monday night. So well in advance of the next town meeting, which will likely be June, we'll have another demonstration. I think people will be satisfied with it. It works pretty well. It's a radio frequency rather than internet-based. But we'll talk more about that at a future meeting.
Seven fifty... Well, seven fifty. Yeah. So...
You can jump in.
No.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna read the public hearing. Okay. So, powers of North Reading, notice of informational hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of town of North Reading that an in-person virtual information hearing on the articles contained in the January 27, 2025 special town meeting will be held Thursday, January 23, third at 2025 at 7:15 p.m. at Town Hall, room 14. The hearing may also be accessed virtually as follows. There were a bunch of numbers in Zoom. This hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more and ask questions about the articles on the town meeting warrant in advance of the special town meeting. A listing of warrant articles is as follows. Article 1, amend code zoning bylaws, accessory dwelling unit. Article 2, amend code zoning bylaws, short-term rental. Article 3, amend code zoning bylaws, flood plan district. Article 4, payment in lieu of taxes, agreement for renewable energy generation slash storage facilities. Article 5, prior year bills. Article 6, amend fiscal year 2025 operating budget. Article 7, amend fiscal year 2025 capital budget. This hearing is held pursuant to sections 18 to 25 of chapter 38 of the Massachusetts general laws. Any interested citizen is welcome to virtually attend and participate in this hearing. It is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. This warrant article hearing is intended to represent an opportunity for extended virtual discussion in advance of town meeting. We sincerely hope you will join us for this hearing on January 23, 2025 at 7:15.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, if we could perhaps invite the town planner and those in the planning commission who want to come forward to join us, that would be great. While they're doing so...
Welcome.
I know many of the people in this room know, but for those who do not know, those letters in red are very important. We cannot conduct business at town meeting without a quorum of 150 registered voters in attendance. So we really encourage folks, we know it's difficult, we know it can be tough to get out to a town meeting, but if you need help getting there, you're able to call the Senior Center. If you need childcare, there's an option that's available online. But we can't stress enough how important it is that we get that quorum of attendees in order to be able to conduct business. In the absence of a quorum, what will happen is, state law will go... We will not be able to approve the bylaw, and a state law will go into effect. And the limited amount of regulation we are able to put into effect for affordable... Excuse me, for accessory dwelling units, we won't be able to approve that limited amount of regulation. So spread the word. We really need folks to attend. We'll be in the gym at the North Reading Middle High School. We have seating on the floor for those who may have trouble with the bleachers. We have plenty of overflow seating for the bleachers as well. It's fine to watch at home, but you're not able to participate from home. The only way to participate is by being there in person. So, thank you.
It's gonna be a warm 31 degrees. We'll go over the articles, Mr. Burrow.
Sure.
Mr. Mackey, please. Maybe give him the light system bit for us.
Do you want to toggle it? You should be able to toggle through it on there. But I can do it if you want. You can do it. It should just be able to use the arrows. It should work.
Okay. Article 1. Did I do that?
I did.
Oh, I see. So for Article 1, on August 6, the Affordable Homes Act was signed into law, and that means that this law allows accessory dwelling units by right in all communities, beginning on February 2, 2025. North Reading zoning bylaws do not currently regulate or allow ADUs. Zoning bylaws do regulate accessory uses and structures. So the proposed zoning bylaws, they're proposed to amend our existing accessory uses, accessory structures, and definition section of the zoning bylaw in order to adopt a definition that's consistent with the state's definition of accessory dwelling units. It would allow the town to also provide additional dimensional regulation. In the absence of the bylaw change, current setbacks for accessory structures that we have in North Reading currently would apply, and those are smaller setbacks than are proposed by this bylaw, meaning that these would be closer to the neighboring property lines. The proposed bylaw makes the setbacks stricter, as in, it would be the same as primary dwellings. So for example, instead of a 10-foot setback, that would be allowed just by accessory structures currently, it would require a 25-foot side setback. So as far as the regulations...
So the Select Board has already voted to recommend, the Community Planning Commission's already voted to recommend as well, and Finance Committee on Wednesday night voted to recommend the articles.
I believe, anyone, as you have questions, as we go through it, just please raise your hand and...
And come to the voting.
Just to quickly comment, the Finance Committee recommending this article was close to nec掌声, because of the available... What it costs to put a student through our schools compared to what we're gonna tax an ADU, that is... That is interesting to see. Thank you. Anyone online? Yeah. One thing, I'm sorry, the one is, the first slide that you had up, the Affordable Homes Act. Just to bring back up what we discussed last time, is that this is not affordable homes. This is not affordable housing. I don't know why that bullet point is up there. It has nothing to do with this. And that it also impacts our affordable housing impact. It puts us on the other side of the scale, going away from meeting the state's standards. So thank you.
So first, for those who are attending virtually, if you could just express either by the raised hand or by using the chat that you wish to speak, that would be helpful. Secondly, I believe the title that's up there is the title of the act, as the state approved it. We didn't...
Very misleading.
Just to be clear, agreed, it is not affordable housing, and it shouldn't be called that. But just to be clear, this isn't our doing, this is the state's doing. This is happening, whether we like it or not. It's not like the... It's not like the...
MTA.
MBTA. Communities that we got to vote against or for that. This is happening, whether we like it or not. What we're doing here, Planner and the CPC, that was worked hard on, is trying to make it more palatable for us, so that we can have some of our own restrictions in here, so that we don't have to just do everything that they're applying. Did I explain that correctly?
Yes.
Jeff Yule again. I'm gonna be candid in the sense that I find this all very, very confusing. I've spoken to some people here this evening. A lot of words, not much said. I guess it's difficult to understand why, if, as Select Woman Mrs. Gonzalez says, that this is gonna be law on February 2, all right, and we can't change the law, we can subtract from the law, and we can't add to the law. So the question becomes to me, as I've read it a number of times, is if we can't do anything about the law, why are we going through this process? It doesn't seem to me like it's helping the community, or can help the community. Because if some of this is passed, someone could challenge us and say, well, this doesn't conform to the law. If it doesn't conform to the law, then we're gonna be in the midst of a suit, or a legal challenge, which is gonna cost us money to do. And it's gonna continue on and on, because we put in a... I'm gonna use the term bogus bylaw that's won't fit this law. This law is pretty well-defined, from what I can see, and we have no choice but to accept it. So why are we gonna have a town meeting on something that is gonna put us in a bad or negative position? Anybody have an answer to that question?
We actually do. We had a... Mrs. McKnight, I know you mentioned the last meeting, so...
So everything in this bylaw, we believe, is consistent with what the state has, you know, is requiring communities to do. What it does is it makes it a little bit stricter. So for example, in the absence of us doing anything at this town meeting, the setbacks would be much more permissive for these. You could have an accessory dwelling unit pretty close to a neighbor's property line. With this bylaw, we're proposing to protect neighbors by having the setback be quite a bit larger, and to regulate it more like a single-family house. We don't have to do anything with this bylaw at all. There's no requirement that the town do this, but we have to allow accessory dwelling units as of February 2. So those building permits can start getting issued with no regulations, or they can have some regulations, which is what the CPC is proposing.
Mr. Chairman, well, there are regulations by the state.
Oh, yes, yes.
So there are regulations there. But the changing... I can't come up with a real good example of saying, you know, you can only be... What, is this 20 feet to property? To neighbor's property, 20 feet?
So, okay, so, under what would be allowed? It would be 10 feet from a property line. This bylaw would allow the town to say, no, you must be 25 feet from a neighbor's property.
But why? The state says you can't make any changes to that.
No, that's not correct. The state did not say we couldn't make changes. The state gave us a list of things that we had to do. But they said that we could make reasonable regulations, and that's what the CPC is attempting to do with this.
And the state told you that that was a reasonable...
Town council has told us that, and that is what the state regulations say. So yes, we believe that we are within our rights to do this.
Okay. All right. I mean, if you can make some changes, that's not how I read the law, and we're gonna be challenged on that many, many times, because they're gonna refer to the state, and the state says 10, and you want 20. They're gonna come, and it's not gonna be worth our while. But thank you very much.
Pat Fillmore, 24, Field Press Harris. CPC has worked on this a lot. Could somebody from CPC get up and talk to the people? I mean, I understand what Danielle's saying. This is to protect our zoning laws, our... And we have to have that done. But could CPC get up and give us a spiel, please?
So, the way I see it is, the state did come out with this law, and they... It was a 10-foot. But they also allowed us to make a bylaw. So our bylaw says 25 feet. So all we did was adapted our bylaw into the ADU. And so what that does is, it becomes restricted as a bylaw. We're not changing the law. We're adding... It's a bylaw. So instead of 10 feet away, we're just saying, if you wanna do business in North Reading, it has to be 25 feet away. And what we did in discussion was, we tried to protect, because the law was really loose and non-restricted. It was just a three-for-all. And there is gonna be more discussion. You know, there's other stuff we've talked about, trailers and with wheels, without wheels, and sores, and can you have a tank out? It's just crazy, the stuff that's gonna come up. But with that in mind, the 10-foot rule, we just leaned on our own bylaw, our own ruling of 25 feet, and the AG says, you know, they're saying that that's reasonable. So we look at it like it's a little more restrictive, and it won't look as... I mean, you, as a property owner, anybody owns a property here in town, the last thing they're gonna want is a structure with people living in it 10 feet from their property line. So by us making, creating the bylaw, what we've done is, we restricted it to 25 feet. So do I like the law? No, I don't like the law at all.
Right.
I think it's... It puts, as Mr. Massey alluded to, it puts a burden on the town as people start to move in under the ADU law, and start adding students, and then, you know, we're stuck with that. We are stuck with that. Taxpays in North Reading are stuck with that. And I'm glad you brought that up about the Finance Committee, because I don't know whether the Finance Committee was totally aware of the overall structure of this package and how it will affect the community. Now, it might not be a blast of a lot of people overnight, but it will certainly creep in and crawl and add to the amount of people who live here. So that's my take on... If that helps you a little bit with the bylaw... Yeah, it's actually... The law stays. I don't really like it personally, personally, but this bylaw does help our town a little.
Well, this is probably a stupid question. I mean, because you could put another, you know, dwelling on your property, so you could rent out to, you know, your in-laws or your brother and sister or something. Does that affect anything with the MBTA? Because now we've got more housing, so to speak.
No. So these are two totally different laws.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, because you've got more housing, if you put...
And it's complete... Just so you know, the ADU is completely unrestricted. You don't have to rent it to a family member.
Oh, I know.
You can rent it to whoever you want.
And also clarification for that, Mrs. McKnight, you might know something, but the ADU still just makes it... It's still just one lot, one house, meaning the ADU doesn't make it a two-family.
That's correct.
Correct? So it doesn't add that. And also, because you already brought it up and opened up, Mr. Griffin, the second... When we get to Article 2, it's kind of the same thing, just restrict to the best of our ability, based on what we're allowed to do, so it doesn't turn into, I build an ADU and rent it out like one, two days at a time, which we'll get to. So again, another restriction. So, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Could we just touch on Mr. Yule's concern about, did we... Does Town Council say that this is okay? That this won't be challenged? That this will be our bylaw and will be adhered to?
Town Council has approved our bylaw. The one thing that got pointed out was the CPC did want to keep the accessory structure height of 10 feet that's already in place. They wanted to keep that, rather than allow that to go up to 35 feet, which is the same as a single-family house. Town Council felt that aspect of the bylaw could be challenged. They didn't feel this was fully consistent with the state regulations. But the CPC opted to leave that one provision in, because they really felt strongly about it. Everything else appears to be very much consistent. According to the Town Council, appears to be consistent with what the state is asking of towns and is requiring. We don't know if a bylaw is accepted by the Attorney General's Office until after town meeting. They have 90 days to review the bylaw. Anything that is not consistent with state law, we assume will be strictly prominent. But there's really no way to guarantee that until after the Attorney General's Office. And anything can be challenged, I mean.
Yeah, but they'll strike that before, anyway.
Before it goes... Right. If the Aging's Office sees something and strikes it, then it's stricken. Later on, if a person doesn't like something in the bylaw, anyone is free to sue us over that. But that applies to any bylaw. Anything can be challenged.
And also, my understanding is that they can strike just part of it, correct?
Yes.
Like you don't have to strike the whole thing. They could just say, everything is fine, except that.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so in the early part of this, we also... The CPC addressed detached versus attached. attached. And we, we tried to leave out the detached language, because that, we were afraid, you know, sheds would be taken to.
Yeah.
We were afraid of all the garages and all this other stuff. So we, we did try to, the CPC did try to skirt around that, the AG struck it down. So, we're trying, we're trying to do what we can, you know. But the financial part of it too, I think that the Select Board needs to somehow maybe prepare financially for, you know, incoming students and all that stuff. And Finance Committee should really take a closer look at that as well. Because if we do get, if it is very popular here, becomes popular, then, you know, you think your budget stinks now? You're going to come back in June for another two and a half override? Well, this is just going to compile and add to it. So the complexity, as far as the tax structure, what the average person's paying in town is definitely going to increase by that.
Mr. Chair, is there any Finance Committee member here that can speak to the recommendation?
I don't see it.
From Wednesday, no? Okay. Maybe the town meeting, they'll be able to have my material.
Amy Sonia, 24, Field Press Harris. Just a question, Danielle, this does have to go to the state to get approved once we change it at town meeting, correct?
Once the town meeting vote takes place, it goes to Attorney General's Office for approval, and then?
So if, for some reason, they do not approve it, what happens then? Do we go back to town meeting in June and try and pass a new amendment, or?
We can. That'll be up to, you know, be discussed by the CPC and the Select Board, and, you know, I, I, in the meantime, though.
But wouldn't we have to? If it's not a legal bylaw, we'd have to go back to town meeting, change it.
Well, we don't have to pass a bylaw at all.
Because we could just stay with the state regulations?
Absolutely. And that would then default to what we have in place already for accessory structures, 10 feet from property lines, et cetera, all the other accessory structure, like sheds. That would be used to, as our regulations for accessory dwelling units, instead of how the CPC wants to regulate it as if they were a single-family houses. So we don't have to have a bylaw. If it doesn't pass, all that happens is on February 2nd, people can come to the Building Department, pull permits for ADUs, and they will not have the stricter setbacks. That's fine.
Thank you. Another question, the ADUs, there is a square footage in it, correct? Like, there's a, no more than, or no less than?
The ADU can be 900 square feet, or half the size of the main dwelling, whichever is smaller.
Okay.
So it can't exceed that.
And with these ADUs, North Reading is a little bit unique, because we are 100% septic. They still have to follow Title V regulations, so if they add an ADU, and they have a four-bedroom system, and they already have a four-bedroom home, they cannot add an ADU without increasing the size of their septic, and their property may not sustain a larger septic system, correct?
That's what I'm saying.
So, Amy, that is a rule, but I think, well, my fear of this was, we discussed this in meeting, was that if you turn one of your bedrooms in your house to a library?
But Title V code is the total number of rooms divided in half is what dictates the size of the septic system. It's not the number of bedrooms, if you read Title V code.
You got me there.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So it's the total number of rooms divided in half, that dictates the size of the septic system. So that's why I just want to make sure that.
So, so that's good. That's good to know. I'll have to talk to you about that now.
I can pull that code up if you want.
I would love to see that.
I'm pretty confident that.
I would love to see that.
Give me that again, because, again, I'm sorry, I was digging into that too, because when I first bought, when you first get into the thing with septic, you always get the easy answer, by number of bedrooms, right? That's what you get, you know, so that's, can you?
But I'm pretty sure Title V code does state, it's the total number of rooms divided in half, it does not include kitchens, bathrooms, and pantries, I think, but I'd have to pull it up and see. But I just think that that's important for people to know, that, I get that this ADU thing is pretty scary, but we are unique, because we're 100% septic.
Septics work into our benefit on that one. Can I just address, what Amy's?
An expert.
Just, just, Amy, so, so you know, when you said this could go back and get struck, doesn't necessarily going to be fully struck. It could just be a couple of things, like that 10-foot. They could not agree with that, but everything else, fine.
Thank you.
Just to add on, Ralph Semire, Park Street, North Reading, just to add what Amy says, she's correct, as far as number of rooms divided in half is your bedroom. When you go to add one, whether it's an ADU or whatever, now that's going to put you in a new construction that everyone has to be aware of. So if you have a four-bedroom house, the criteria to increase flow to, say, a fifth bedroom, which would be that accessory dwelling, changes everything in everybody's yard. You know, it's not a very easy thing to increase a flow. From there, you're required by law to have additional usage space designated for your new septic system. It's not just adding the size of the, of the septic system, you know, one finger to add one bedroom type of thing. It goes like it's a brand spanking new lot, you have to meet all the criterias without any variances granted at all. You don't have to get that.
Okay, that's great. It's going to make it more difficult.
And I just, just to get the, and from an enforcement, Mr. Gobert, is that, that goes through the Board of Health?
Correct.
That shuts you down if you try to, if you don't have the capacity, correct?
Yeah, if you, before you can get a permit to build, you need to demonstrate that you have the capacity to go along with what you're looking to do. So if you're looking to add a bedroom, you're going to need to show if you can comply.
And I'm assuming, okay, I'm assuming that would be part of the process, that you want to?
It is now.
It is now. So you want to add this ADU, show me your plans for a new septic, pretty much, if it's not already rated.
Is that the word I'm using right? Rated?
To increase your load. Mr. Massey?
I just want to speak on that. Something I, I went off on ADUs last Select Board meeting, I probably should have done that here, so that more people can understand. I, the modular units, so this allows you modular units, I'm going to bring up a construction trailer again. So a construction trailer is a modular unit, okay? You take that, those wheels off, it's permanent. Now, closet, can make bedroom, can make kitchen, it's got windows, it's got bathrooms, it's got everything you need to house an ADU. I'd hate to see a bunch of construction trailers in this town. I know we have to go through it, so, you know, I voted yes, because I feel like my hands are tied, which is unfortunate. But as far as the principle of this law, I'm with you. To, to make something clear, and I think maybe there's an opportunity where we can amend this, we spoke about construction trailers, and we talked about, and I say construction trailers, could just be a trailer, right? I'm sorry, I keep calling it a construction trailer, but we talked about this at the last meeting, and we said, "Well, they got to make sure they got to tie into septic, they got to tie into electric, right?" Okay. What if they had an external tank? That that's where they were going. So they could put it under their trailer, like the one I'm in every day.
We're getting a no over here.
As an external tank. By the letter of the law, wouldn't that be complying?
Do you have an answer? Or does anyone?
If it is, can we make an amendment to say, "Hey, everything's got to be permanent, no external utilities," or, or something to be able to provide a little bit more protection?
We are, so, we do have to allow people to have, we can't tell them that they have to have separate or, or utilities, like, we can't tell them where they're connecting to their utilities, but what we could do is, and I actually asked Town Council about this, and had a motion prepared, just in case we wanted to use it, if people wanted to do it, a motion that would require any ADU to be on a foundation. And it goes as far as we think we can go to address that issue, but I don't know how to address the utility issue. I, there's not, we're not really allowed to do that.
Well, the state might say, "You're not allowed to do 25-foot setbacks, so."
No, we are allowed.
Frankly, frankly, give it a shot and see if they say.
We are absolutely, we are absolutely allowed to do 25-foot setbacks. We are allowed to have the same setbacks as a single-family house that's very explicit in the regulations, and that's what we're doing.
Mr. Yule? Thank you. Jeff Yule again. I just want to go back to, sorry, I'm forgetting your name at the moment.
Danielle.
Danielle, thank you. Danielle was saying, about coming back, so if this were, A, if we didn't have qualms, B, if it fails at town meeting, all right? I don't think we can come back to the state and say we want to, you know, redo this, go do a redo, and come back and say to the state, you know, it failed, but we want to try to bring it up again. You indicated that the state, we can review it and do it again earlier. I forget exactly your wording, but that's what you did say. You said, "If it didn't pass in, in town meeting, okay?"
No, the question was, if the Attorney General's Office, for some reason, did not approve our law.
I'm sorry, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
If, if town meeting, if it doesn't pass town meeting, I don't know what everyone will want to do. We could bring it back, or bring it back differently, or not.
I'm sorry, I can be correct in my, God bless us here. Yeah, if, if the, if the state didn't accept it, okay, you indicated that we could, then revisit it in a June town meeting.
We could. It would be an option.
But I thought that the, the law, February 2nd, that's it, you have like, until February 2nd to conform to the law.
No, February 2nd, the law goes into effect.
Right.
These are just extras. These are extra regulations that we want to put in place to make it more restrictive and to make fewer properties eligible to review. And you have to.
So going down the road, we can do that anytime, more often?
Than a year, but then everything else?
But in the meantime, we have to conform to what they're saying, 10-foot.
That I would understand.
We're not getting the luxury of what we are trying to do.
Yeah, I just don't, I'm trying to think that, that we're cornering ourselves into a position that we think we can do one thing, but we really can't, and that's.
We can always change those levels. We can always change those levels.
Mr. Chair, I'm interested in, by the.
Hold on, one other.
No, just that the, if we pass this bylaw Monday night, the February 2nd guidelines are retroactive to that date, the bylaws at the, the date they were approved at town meeting, even though it hasn't been approved by the AG yet. If the AG throws out a portion of it, those things don't take effect. Everything else that we're talking about proposing here is in effect. The 25-foot setback would be in effect for anybody looking for a permit, even in this cusp period, so they'd have to wait to see if it gets okayed or not okayed, or they could, at their own risk, you know, go ahead and go ahead with it. Now, if it's 25 feet, and they agree to it, and they're going to start building right away, they're in compliance of 10. It's just, it's more restrictive. So the important thing to understand is, the town meeting action prior to the February 2nd date is important, if you want any of this to be in effect, for the applications that immediately come in. That's all. So, and again, if it's portion, if that 25-foot thing gets struck down, which we don't believe it's going to at all, but if it were, if that is an example, then it just would revert to the 10. And whoever pulled the permit, if they want to risk doing it to 10 feet instead of 25 feet, more power to them, but if it's approved at the 25, move it. You know, move it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm actually, I didn't realize that Mr. Massey wasn't finished on the prior thing, so, Mr. Massey?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what were you talking about?
No, I thought you weren't finished.
Okay.
You know about the follow-up from before, or were you all set?
Oh, uh, no, I lost my train of thought, thank you.
Sorry, we get it, that's something.
Thank you. Jim Gannon, 925. I saw a clarification question. So this document, what I'm reading, says it shall not occupy more than 25% of the required rear yard. And it also says it shall not be less than 20 feet from the front, 20 feet in height. I don't see the 25.
So those are our current accessory structure regulations. The change is, except that, do you see where it starts to say, except that in the case of an accessory dwelling unit?
Maybe it helps.
Yeah, it's, it's at the end.
That talks about garages and sheds, Jim. It's actually, it's garages and sheds. And then, except for accessory dwelling units, is going to be a little different.
Right. So the except for is where we get the more restrictive stuff.
So this does confirm that this is a, Mr. Griffin, sorry, Mr. Chair, through you, that.
Except for ADUs aside, there are some that.
There's only one dwelling.
Are the same as the district.
Per lot, I mean, one ADU per lot.
In the districts. That's right.
So that clarifying question is that you can't have two ADUs, correct? On one lot?
Unless by special permit.
So we actually did get some clarification from the state on that. It's up to towns if they want to choose to allow a second ADU by special permit. We don't have that in our bylaw, so that won't be allowed.
Good luck. We haven't opted into that yet.
Yeah.
That'd be a hell of a septic system.
And that special permit's like community planning commission, correct?
We don't have a special permit for that, so we don't have a special permit granting authority.
So we don't have to worry about that.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I were to make a motion on the floor about the external utilities, that's a, that's a huge concern, sorry, it came back around the room to me. I, I want to be able to protect us from trailers.
I, I think with utility, if I'm not mistaken, utility, you just can't have separate utilities. So you.
You can't have separate utilities.
You, not a separate meter, like a separate gas meter on an external ADU?
You are allowed to.
Oh, okay, then, I'm mistaken. Because I don't think, well, originally, I don't know where we were with that, so if you can.
You were looking at that, but the state regulations came out and said we couldn't regulate that, so that's what we have.
So, another strand. The state cannot reg, so the state can't regulate the utility, so then, could you do an external tank for your bathroom?
Probably. I would think that you could, but I don't.
With the Board of Health?
I don't think so.
How would that, you can get it pumped up. I, I think that's a.
Oh, Mr. Semire, can you add some color to that?
According to Title V, it increases flow, so again, we'll go back to a four-bedroom house, and you want to add accessory dwelling, now you're increasing flow to a five-bedroom. You're not allowed to do two individual systems for a unit like that. I believe it has to be a combined five-bedroom septic, because new construction, you don't allow any variances. A tight tank, or something like that you're talking about, Mr. Massey, is considered alternative technologies, and is not accepted for new construction.
Okay.
But a modular unit would not be new construction?
You're increasing the flow from a four-bedroom to adding a fifth bedroom to the property, so that's an increase in flow, so automatically you go to a new construction criteria.
I'm, I'm not taking exception to you, but the, because I know what you do, but the flow wouldn't be added, though, because if you have an external.
So that's an increase in flow.
Not if you have an external tank, because I'm saying you're completely not adding flow to that existing system.
Yeah, but, but again, in order to add a bedroom, that's as far as Title V is, is a law.
I'm talking specifically trailers.
Yeah. But it, but is it going to be a bedroom? Is it, is it going to be a bedroom in that trailer?
Yes.
Then you're increasing the flow of the property itself, from four bedrooms, and you're adding a bedroom in the ADU, so that's, that's considered an increase in flow. Right now, if you have a house and you want to add a poolhouse, with a kitchen, a bathroom, a bedroom, it's an increase in flow. It doesn't matter. You're increasing the design flow criteria for that accepted law.
But what Mr. Massey's saying is, it's an external, like if you went camping.
You're not, you're not allowed to, to do that, because that's considered alternative technology.
You're not allowed to do that.
A tight tank, a tight tank, or something like that, with individual flows and alarms for that, you're not allowed to, for new construction use.
So we're already protected from that.
So whether you build it, or it comes pre-built, which is what a modular is, one way or the other, it counts as new?
Because you're increasing the flow of the property itself.
To where?
From.
You're placing the flow from where?
From four, from four to a fifth, if you're adding a one bedroom in the ADU.
To storm drains, or to septic?
No, septic, to septic.
That's what I'm getting at, though, is you're not adding flow to the septic, because That's what I'm getting at though, is you're not adding flow to the septic because you'd have an external tank above ground.
But you're not allowed to have an external tank, because that's considered alternative technology.
By the letter of the definition of these guidelines, that's my concern.
Is that a state law? Is that you're citing?
Yes.
The health code?
Yeah.
That's a health code?
Yep, it's a health code, so when you increase the flow.
And on top of that, we're mandating that they put it on a structure, right, on a foundation?
We can do that. I have a motion prepared from town council that will allow us to do that. We just, the CPC never fully discussed it, so I don't know whether that's something we wanna go ahead with, but it's here and if we want to.
Yeah, so I think, I think what was going on too is there's so much other discussion with this, because the law just, it goes into effect, we have no time. So there was so much other discussion that, that's something that we touched on just a little bit. It probably, I think it would probably be a good idea to do that.
It's not that hard.
Right, I mean, to add that into the language.
I think it would.
What's that?
It would keep us from having just a trailer plopped on a property.
Really problem is, well, so what about slab, like if, like, like if they drop something on a slab, now how does that? I know there's language in the law, there is some language. It's like 180 pages, the law, or actually might even be more than that.
The, another thing I wanna bring up, something we talked about a couple meetings ago, was student registration, registration to our schools every year. We were gonna confirm that, have we confirmed that?
That they're registering each year? I'm not aware that there's an annual registration process.
Yep.
I have a got.
Mr. Sutter and I both have gone through it, can tell you on the other side of it.
Did we talk about last meeting, that was, we were gonna have it for tonight?
No.
I'm, there you go.
Students have to report to the state every year of the number of students.
Understood.
No, the question is, Mr. Gilberto, is that what came up was that, does the school annually check if the student still resides in North Reading? And where the discussion came from was that when we got to the short-term rental, it's that, well, maybe I move into North Reading, live here for two, three months, get my kid signed up, and then move back to wherever. And then if no one checks it, theoretically, my kids could be, we could live in, name your city or town. So that was the premise of Mr. Mas, of Mr. Massey's.
Right, but this, and the schools normally check because they have the process, they have to notify the parents going to register their kids in. So say they move to, you know, I won't say East End or someplace. And they go to get their kids into a school, they're not gonna transport them from there to North Reading. So the schools have to notify North Reading to get the records so that they can place those kids, you know. So they check, sometimes a few kids slip through the cracks.
Yes, they do.
And over the years, over the year, we find out, you know, guidance or somebody finds out, you know, that kid's living in someplace. But we're still paying, you know, so, yes.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure the reregistration process is checking to make sure that child lives in a home in North Reading. Every year.
Yeah, and usually the schools do check. I will give them credit for that, they check. And again, the schools where their kids are now going have to get the information, the records on the kids so that they can place them wherever they place them.
That's good.
Please, sir.
First, Fran Hash, you said on my, I'm long.
No, there's a paper, North Hammonds are. People at home.
People watching can't hear you.
People at home wanna hear you, see you.
I got a question though, a couple cautions. Accessory dwelling unit, that's a self-sustained structure, separate from the main house, correct?
It can also be.
It can be attached.
It can be attached as well.
It can be attached also?
Yes.
So this does away with the old in-law apartment type of dwelling laws?
Right.
So now this would allow to have a in-law apartment above the house or detached, attached to a garage overhead?
Yes.
So that would allow all that. How does the impact on a standard 40,000 square foot lot and a 20,000 square foot lot is impacted? Is there any differential between the two? Somebody can put a structure on the 20,000 square foot lot?
Um, yes, if they meet the setbacks. So that's why we wanted to make our setbacks a little bit stricter, because it means that it takes up less of the lot. But yes, you could do that if you can meet the setbacks that are required, which is the same as for single-family homes. And if you can meet the size of, you know, the size of the actual ADU is limited to either 900 square feet or half of the main house, whichever is smaller, it can't exceed that. And you have to meet, fully meet the Title V regulations.
So it has to comply with these bylaw setbacks and restrictions?
Yes, if we do pass, if we, it defaults to our accessory structure bylaw, which is a little bit looser, yes.
Also, I assume based upon what I heard, that the septic systems have to comply with the bylaws that we have?
That's correct, Title V, they have to comply.
Thank you.
To your first question, sir, if there is an existing in-law, there is no incentive for someone who has an existing in-law to register to get taxed more. So if you have an existing ADU, you're not gonna knock on town hall's door and say, hey, I'd like to register my ADU so I can live here legally.
No, but I'm saying. Yeah, what I'm saying is that if somebody wants to use that, there's no distinction between a self-standing unit, an attached unit, or a briefway garage unit, or any of that.
This will change that, and not our doing, the state's doing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, is there anyone online that have a question?
I don't see any.
We're gonna go to Article 2.
Oh, we have something.
Wait, oh.
My next neighbor, excuse me, Jim Gannon, again, my next neighbor has a in-law apartment, in-law house, actually, in-law side of the house. And I didn't, I didn't understand your point about the state takes that away. I didn't understand what you.
I didn't say the state takes that away, I said that's been going on in town.
It has, for 30 years.
In every town, everywhere.
For the last 30 years, I know.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, no one used to live, they passed away.
So that's already there?
Right.
Like at what Mr. Massey said, they're not gonna come knock into town hall and go, oh, by the way, I have an in-law.
Yeah, no one's gonna voluntarily sign up there.
This will, this will.
As an ADU.
This will affect anyone wanting to put one in now.
Stay, stay an in-law.
Well, stay whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, anyone else in the hall?
Normally, you're gonna close the public hearing on Article 1?
Fair. I've been keeping it open from back and forth.
Before I go, thank you for proceeding. My first time around this chair. And then we go around and then we close, you close the public hearing, then we deliberate on it, again.
Why you need Mr. Olair's from here soon?
That's right. He squares us away.
I was holding my comments.
Do you have a recommendation?
No.
Finance committee? Do you have a recommendation?
Sort of a couple things. Normally, we close the hearing at the end of the hearing. But procedurally, we'd usually give the public, and then the board members should go, sometimes the board members have to go first. So, but I wouldn't close each hearing for each article, I would just take them in that order.
I think I'm just gonna move it along, and anyone can go back and ask about a previous thing. But before I take any more comment from the public for Article 1, anyone else from the board?
Well, actually, I'd like to hear from the public before I.
Well, there's one, okay.
Right.
I just have a quick question.
Could you say your name and your address?
I'm Josh Malongo, it's your Ms. Roybo. Does anybody have an idea of why somebody would vote against this? Is the proposal, I mean, I've heard a lot of talk about, you know, why we would want it, but I don't, yeah.
I do, I mean, if you were looking to build a larger, or you had a tight property and you needed access to encroach up to 10 feet on your property, on your neighbor's property line, then you would vote against this. Because it would give you more ability to construct your home without having this bylaw in place. If you're interested in limiting the amount of development that can happen on a particular property, then you would vote in favor of this. That's my own analysis. Maybe I overstated.
Right now, if that happens, don't people have the option of requesting a variance or something?
You can request a.
Do that in a single-family home?
Yeah, just go to the zoning board.
I mean, is that gonna restrict that, change our variance?
But that's for the primary structure.
That doesn't apply to the structure.
Yeah.
Which I thought is what.
You can request a variance from any dimensional situation on your property, whether that's for a primary structure or for an ADU. But this is talking about what's allowed by the right. Anyone can request a variance or setback or height or whatever they want on their property, and that would apply to ADUs as well.
Good question. What's the difference between someone putting an ADU in their backyard or front yard, depending on the size of their property, in a whole new house?
In a what?
In a whole new house.
There's restrictions on the size. 900 square feet or half of the size of the house, yes.
Or setback.
900 square feet or half the size of the house, whichever is.
I mean, you have to have a, your house has to be over 1,800 square feet just to get to the full 9. So if you have like a 1,500 square foot house, the max you can go 750.
Right. Can't put a whole nother whole house on.
I guess unless you wanna call it 700 square foot house, and a floor.
Mr. Chair, through you, Ms. McKnight, where in the, does it say that it has to be in the backyard?
Um, so I think.
You know, you don't wanna drive down the street and start seeing structures in front yards, right?
So it says, I think our current accessory structure bylaw says it can't be in the front yard, but I'd have to double-check that, because that's not part of the new bylaw.
Very important for Monday.
I can check that, but I don't know it off the top of my head. Let me see, I'm sorry, let me just take a look.
No worries, take your time.
So why should you put that up?
So, again, not to put her on, but Mr. Massey asked a finance committee member here, I do see Mrs. Herbert is online. I don't know whether she's prepared to speak or not to the recommendation.
I'll get to her after the rest of the board. While she, while Mrs. McKnight looks at that, Mr. Olair.
No, I just wanted to, basically, the follow-up with Mr. Malongo was hitting at, you know, why would someone vote against this? Again, what we asked the community planning commission to do, and they've done, is take a look at what the law that's been put in effect for 351 cities and towns across the Commonwealth, and is there anything that can be done at the local level to constrict the impact of it on the community? Because there's no doubt, you add more residential dwellings, chances are you're gonna add more children to the school system and therefore increase the cost of operating the town. So what came back was, what we can do is we can implement our bylaws to be as, to consider the ADUs to be similar to what primary residents would be and the setbacks associated with that, as opposed to the setbacks that are associated with a garage or a shed, which was less. And it appears as though that would pass muster with the AG's office, and again, that will certainly limit the number of properties in the town of North Reading with not only the setback requirement, but also the septic requirements and the increase in the septic system, the need to increase the leaching fields for the septic systems. So in proposing what's being proposed here, you know, what it does is it limits the number of properties in North Reading that can actually put one in. More would be allowed if we just did nothing. So that's what they're proposing. Gilberto's point, Mr. Malongo's question, you know, who would vote against this? Someone who has a smaller lot and can't meet the setbacks, the proposed setbacks, and the septic requirements may be opposed to this because all of a sudden, the value of their property or the ability to have an ADU is further restricted beyond what the state allows. So they may vote no. That's version, the only reason why you would do it. So we're very cognizant, I'm sure the financial area is extremely cognizant of the impact, particularly on schools, and again, public safety services too, as far as, you know, calls from police and fire, ambulance services and all the rest is gonna come along with an increase in population. The fact is, every city in town has to allow these to happen. Can we restrict that growth legally? Then we can, and is that what we wanna do? And that's what's being proposed. And that's why there's unanimity here of, yeah, we think this is a substantial, could be a substantial impact on the community right now. And while we have to buy into the program here, if we can limit that accessibility, let's do that now. And again, if we find that it's not that a bigger deal, again, people can go for variances, or we can come back and revisit and revisit the setbacks which would allow more. But for an interim approach right now, this seems to make eminent sense for the interests of the community from a financial standpoint and growth standpoint for residential properties. And that's why I have a support. I can't change the law, and you know, I can opine all I want, I could complain all I want, but the fact is, it's in place February 2nd. And we have an opportunity to do something to assist us to control that growth right now. And again, as other cities and towns implement other things where they have different ideas, whether they require a foundation or not require a foundation, and other cities and towns are doing that, then we can go back at June town meeting, October town meeting, and amend it for those coming forward, those applications, you know, from that point forward. So again, I think we made the recommendations to support it, and I think it's a wise one at this point. I think it's a measured approach, an approach we should be taking, it should be supportive and vocal about the town meeting, and I hope out of it, the people show up and do it.
So, Ms. McKnight, just a answer.
I just have an answer to Mr. Massey's question. So there's nothing in our accessory structure bylaw that says it has to be in the back. If it is in the backyard, it can't occupy more than 25% of it. But there's nothing in our accessory structures bylaw that says that it has to be in.
Does the board think we should?
Can we make an amendment?
New guy here, what's the process if I wanna make an amendment?
Maybe we talk to the CPCs.
Yeah, I think.
Or town meeting floor?
CPC could add that in.
Well, CPC maybe can figure that out, but.
I think, I think, I think if you were to say, you know, backyard, side yard, front yard, it'd be restricted in that respect, my guess is that would get strict, strictly, because you can't determine where on your lot you're gonna put your primary residence.
I think you're right.
You know, it's a huge difference, you know, it's the way you put your primary residence, you have to be.
It's not primary.
Back from the stream here, you know, you can put your house in the front of the lot, or you put it in the back of the lot, so in order to meet the setbacks. If you're gonna be more restrictive than that on accessory dwelling unit, my guess is you're gonna run the risk of getting it through on the one side.
Thank you, Mr. Smart.
Just a quick question. Doesn't the town have different offsets for front of property, side of property, and back of property? Give me setbacks, no?
For primary, primary.
Different ones, Daniel, for front of property, sides of property, and back of properties?
Yes.
So is that something maybe the board might wanna address if they can within 10?
So this does put in place the same setbacks as for the single-family home in any given district. If you're in President's A, that means, you know, 50 from the back and 25 from the side and 40 from the front. This bylaw says that you have to meet that if you have an ADU.
So they're treating the ADU the same as they're treating the primary residence? Which has must, where if you're gonna say you can only put in the back right-hand corner of your property, you have to be 25 feet back, they're gonna go.
And also, like, maybe I haven't toured the town as much, but front yards tend to be progressively smaller.
Yeah.
Like progressively, and also.
Properties that would have.
The properties that have the large front yards, I don't think they're gonna be putting it there. Because I don't know many people with a $2 million house who's gonna stick a shed in the front yard, they ain't gonna have.
Good point, good point.
So, I mean, so what I mean though is, I think that.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be.
Something where I feel like that would be more of a minimal, and again, it's subjective, right? I just thought, I can't guarantee that, but I'm just saying that if you got a big front yard, I mean, like, honey, I'm just gonna put my poker room up there, I don't know. I mean, it might not pass muster at home, forget about muster at the state, so, I don't know, I just.
That was good.
Right?
So if I could, Mr. Chair, good point, by the way. That's good common sense thinking. So anyways, our intention in just talking just a few minutes ago was to actually make a motion to amend Article 1. Okay, and this is our intention, and I'll read it to you. Yep, that's us. So amend code zoning bylaws, accessory dwelling unit. I move to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant with the addition of the following new subsection G to propose section 200-36C. G is, an ADU must have a permanent foundation and be connected to external utilities. No trailers, manufactured homes, as defined in General R, Chapter 140, Section 32Q, or any other dwelling unit equipped with a permanent chassis with wheels may be used as an accessory dwelling unit.
You just wrote this up?
Well, so.
I had town halls prepare it.
All right, I'm like, I'm not.
In case we wanted to do that. I just asked town halls to prepare it, because the CPC touched on it, but they didn't fully flesh out whether they wanted to do it until they roll.
So I think the intention is that if this warrant article does go forward and goes before the town, we don't amend this on the floor. Because if we amend the article on the floor, that's going to confuse a lot of people. So if we amend it now, when it gets to the floor, they clearly understand.
But does the CPC need to go on that amendment?
Well, I don't think we need to make, I think that's the amendment the CPC intends to make. But we don't.
We don't vote.
So we're not gonna take.
Yeah, we're not, we can't take a vote.
Right.
Right, we can make a motion, we can't take a vote.
But that's the motion we would think that we will be making once.
So the thing is, we have to have this, I think that this part of it is pretty important. When you touched on that, Nick, we did touch on that, that's why this was kind of ready. When you touched on that, Nick, we did touch on that, that's why this was kind of ready. And Danielle was great, she pulled it right out and knew where it was. So that's great. And I think that this is, this is probably important to get in there.
Can you read that again? I apologize.
Sure. Okay, I'll read you the amendment itself, okay? An ADU, oh, there you go.
An ADU must have a permanent foundation. What's permanent foundation?
Not wheels.
Because if you read the whole thing.
I'm just, I'm being.
Right, I know, but if you read through the whole thing, it kind of breaks that down for you.
ADU must be connected to external utilities. So what's?
That means, that means not self-contained, like you were talking about.
No generator.
Yeah, no, no tank.
An ADU must be connected to external utilities.
Right, no tank. It has to be a pipe connected to the system.
Yeah, call national emergency.
That's so broad.
Well, so the thing is, Mr. Massey, and this was just birth and.
I know, no, and it's coming from a lawyer that probably couldn't define those items either, so.
Oh, I thought that, they represent 120 areas.
Okay, hold on. So I think that the worst-case scenario is that this is a line item that gets struck down, right? We take a shot, seems reasonable.
We take a shot.
Right? And I don't, I'm not, again, the select board has not discussed this, and everyone can talk about it now. I don't think it's a bad thing. Procedurally, Mr. Goberto, if we wanted to amend it, because the CPC would have to do this later, because they don't have a quorum to take a vote or deliberate on it, right? Theoretically, we make, the select board makes the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, through you, no, they have a meeting posted for Monday evening. I assume .
We have town meeting posted.
We can amend it on the floor.
To be, to be clear, when we went through this with the facilities master plan and fire station building committee last year, any of the boards involved are able to deliberate during the town meeting, it's an exception in the open meeting law. So as we open the meeting, when we're going through the procedural opening, the board, the commission can discuss whether it wants to revise its main motion. We've already drafted this main motion for them to consider. If three of them were here this evening, they could have taken that vote tonight. But I think they're fully going to be able to revise their main motion. You can either proactively recommend it, or you can wait and offer your recommendation after they make the motion. Either way, I think either way would be fine.
So we can do this, that's a good point, Mike. We can do this just before town meeting. Take care of this, button it up, and then present it on the floor.
My suggestion to my colleagues, because I've always deferred, I know where I'm at with it, and I'm going to, I want to hear everybody with it, but I would, if then we can do it at the same time there.
Immediately thereafter, yeah.
Meaning, I would rather just, even though I know how I think it's going to go, I'd just rather hear it from the CPC first. Mr. O'Leary?
No, I, yes, no, I actually move the board.
You want to do it now?
Yeah, I just moved to, to recommend the inclusion of the amendment, of the amendment as presented to the main motion. I moved to recommend to the planning commission to include the amendment in their main motion to be presented to town meeting. That's all. So we just take an advisory role here tonight, right now.
Okay.
We suggest that you do that. And again, that vote there is a favorable recommendation on it, and when the motion is presented, with or without the amendment, we're in favor of it. So I'm in favor of the original motion, and I'm in favor with the amendment.
Yeah, so this is a great motion, this is a great amendment here. Well, no, kind of.
Which one?
The one that was up, the amendment.
Yeah.
So no trailers, no manufactured homes.
Right, so that was presented.
State guidelines, Mr. O'Leary, there can be no requirement that prohibits, regulates, or restricts a modular dwelling unit from being used as a protected use ADU, which a trailer is a modular unit.
Mr. Griffin?
It depends, again.
So it wasn't manufactured.
You have to look into the definition.
As I'm taking this motion with a grain of salt.
understands what was proposed here. And again, if it gets struck down, that's okay.
But it might not.
I have warned the people. Okay, we're moving with it. I have warned the people of the impacts.
So again, I made the motion. Need to second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. All those in favor? Actually, excuse me, further discussion. There are none, all those in favor? No, no.
No, that's all, that's all the board.
No, this is for the board.
I'm with you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're referring it back to the planning commission, suggesting that they include it as the main motion.
We'll do that.
You can or you cannot. And either way, we're still in favor of the motion.
Thank you.
We're still in favor of the article.
Okay, we have two more to go through. There's one thing, I'm going to go to Mr. Walner, I'm going to, hold on, I'm going to go to Mr. Walner, I'm going to go around, one more round robin to see if anybody in the public has anything to say, and then we're going to move on to Article 2. Mr. Walner.
Just a quick question. Has the council already said this, the motion listed is legit?
Yes.
Yeah, he wrote it.
I know, I know, I know, we, I'm just saying.
He wrote it in the back of his truck during the work.
I'm sorry.
Did town council say that that wording is okay to add on?
Town council is consistent with what the state is regulating.
It would have been nice if we'd known about it much earlier. Is there anything else that we don't know that they said we can do to restrict that you don't?
I don't know. I don't understand.
That's too many words.
No, I'm just asking, like, this is something that, you know, it's a good idea, and town council has studied actually we can do that, but it hasn't been brought forward until design. And so I'm just wondering, is there something else that town council said we can add?
No, there isn't. The CPC discussed this a little bit.
It was brought up, and they discussed, and they asked town council, and they drafted.
Yeah, it wasn't just now.
Well, it's just coming up now.
With us.
For us.
But it was, it came up previously.
And then, on the, just my only comment is on the, you know, Steve O'Leary said the same thing I was going to say, which is that the finance committee is certainly cognizant of the financial impact of having children come into the schools. And we are, we're all aware of that. So if we were going to, if we were going to speak on principle that is going to kill our budget, we'd all have to say, don't recommend. But that's not the point. The point is that we all know that's going to happen. There's nothing we can do about that. The recommendation is, do we support it under bylaw? We do, CPC does, and FinCom is saying the right thing so that we don't confuse people at town meeting that we're not uniformized. Because I think that's what, you know, happy to speak for yourself, but.
I'll give her a chance.
It's fully, you know, it makes sense to me that we're all uniformized about how we approach this thing.
Great.
Sorry, be brief, I'm sorry, Danielle, the term external utilities, it's same to think that we're talking about bathroom facilities, but that's not what that says. So I guess I'm asking for more clarification on the term utilities. Is a heat, light, power, all of it needs to be external?
What it means is that it cannot be self-contained.
Right.
So you can't, you can't have a box that already has everything, and you just have to plug it into a generator and it's good to go. Whatever you put in has to hook up to your electric, your gas, maybe I'm misspeaking, but that's what you mean by external, correct?
And you're sure, yeah.
Yeah, meaning it can't just be that I can put some Duracell batteries in and call it a day.
It's not a campground.
Running municipal light has to run a wire to the accessory dwelling unit.
That's not true.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Hulbert, do you have any comment on Article 1 before I move on?
Mr. Chair.
She's probably going to unmute herself.
I'll just ask a town meeting. She can talk about a town meeting.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If Mrs. Hulbert's trying to speak, you just, I can, I can ask her to unmute if she's trying, or she can chat, message me.
Okay, and she can, like, she can just tell them later on. Mr. Massey, do you have anything else before we move on?
I apologize, I do apologize if I continue to go back. I just keep thinking about some discussions that we had. One of the board members brought up parking garages. So, okay, you've got a principal dwelling, you add an ADU to it, can you then add a garage to it? Because you have to have minimum parking spaces. And I know, Mr. Griffin, we talked about this at the last meeting as well, about how that could, I mean, you're, you could double your structure. You could double the principal dwelling by adding a garage. And I think maybe.
There would be living space. Mr. Chairman, Danielle has her hand up.
For a garage. Mrs. McKnight?
We spoke with town council about this, and that any garage counts as part of the maximum, either the 900 or half the square footage of the main house.
That's great.
Oh, that's huge.
That's huge. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Goberto?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment from Mrs. Hulbert, if you'd like to read it. She said, we debated the article last night and find that the town, just deleted the.
You deleted?
I didn't delete it, it just disappeared. We debated this article last night, and we find that the town has work to do as much as possible to soften the blow. I would remind everyone that whatever ADU is constructed must adhere to local building regulations and state codes.
All right, put a, if I had a financial standpoint, she recommends it?
The vote was to recommend.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I do have an answer to the question that was brought up, and I do, I think I understand Mr. Massey's question about school enrollment and verification. So Mr. Studo and I can speak to, being on one side of it, we know we do not provide anything annually to verify residency. I did confirm with the superintendent, they have a school residency policy. It does not involve an annual verification of residency, but the policy does allow them to pursue instances where somebody may have misrepresented their residency. There are some exceptions to that, but there is not an annual verification process.
Does this, Mr. Chair, through you, does this law change their opinion?
That, we have to ask them. I know they're going to discuss their recommendations on.
We should be doing this every year. Do we, does the select board have any say to?
No.
Add the school, no?
The school, school committee establishes its own policies. Understandable.
I think it's going to be a, let's see what the true impact is, see, see what the interest level is.
I mean, we already got 50 applications waiting, Mr. O'Leary.
50 acquires.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean they're going to comply.
So that would be a school committee policy?
Who wouldn't want, who wouldn't want our school?
I understand.
To reassure every year, that's.
I, I actually agree with you, but I just, I, there's, it's not our purview. But they do have a meeting every Tuesday, which we, Monday as well, which we try to make sure we don't affect.
Mr. O'Leary, you just made a recommendation to advise an elected body of something. Can we make a recommendation to advise another elected body of this, to change their regulations?
Well, we made a recommendation to advise an elected body on a motion they want.
That they put forward.
That they put forward.
That's going to be presented at town meeting.
Yeah. But I'm sure that the school committee would allow anyone to go ask them.
And I did that just to facilitate the discussion here and not have to facilitate any discussion, but have any discussion with town meeting.
I get you, sir.
Trying to avoid another town over at.
That's true. I'm sorry?
Procedureal question, that section that we saw, that is, is that a change to the existing section of the bylaw?
Well.
Or an addition to the existing bylaw?
It's more language on the change we want. So we had all that language, right? And we just added that as well. But nothing's happened yet.
I'm talking about the whole.
Yes.
The whole amend the code. You're amending the bylaws.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is that amended an existing section, or is it an addition to?
It's an addition to.
In addition. Are there any other sections of the bylaw that has to be altered?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We've only done one so far. We have more to go.
Yeah, we have another article of it.
Frank, not because of that amendment. That amendment doesn't impact other sections of the bylaw, so no.
So, so just to, for instance, accessory in-law apartment, it doesn't affect that. But that has changed, from what I've been told.
Change only because of the accessory dwelling unit. This is not, accessory dwelling unit law that was passed by the state and imposed upon cities and towns is not an in-law apartment. The people that went to these accessory dwelling units do not have to be related. It's not an in-law apartment.
Right, right.
So it's totally separate.
They're on the street.
Okay.
It's on, on the street or on the street if they're on the.
Mr. Yule, you're the last coming for Article 2, so make it good.
I was asking, ask a stupid question.
No stupid question.
So, whoops, sorry about that. Someone asked if, can you, if you build an ADU, can you add an additional septic system?
Can you add?
No, we were told by Mr. Samar that it has to be part of the already existing.
What was that? I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's a unique question.
Mr. Yule said, can you add a secondary septic system versus upgrading your existing?
No.
Yeah, he already answered that.
Generally, no, you're allowed to a shared septic system, but I think this is going to be considered a new construction, use all your variances, all of anything, so you have to bring both of them, both units.
So anything that was grandfathered is no longer.
There is no grandfathering, once you go to new construction. Okay, so then, then if, or you have to expand your septic system? Yes. Generally, you can't, if there are any variances taken in the first place for the first primary property, you're not allowed to add on to it or change it. You can't change your septic system? Not if you took any kind of variance at all for your first construction. I don't know what the variances mean, but. If they need a variance for property lines or something like that, you're guaranteed to get a septic system in the property. So now they want to add additional square footage to the field, you can't do that because there's already been a variance granted to that. Oh, if you had a variance, but if you don't need a variance. If you don't need a variance, then you, then you can generally add on to it. Okay, so.
But not separate?
Yeah, no, they make you add on. Make you add on, so you cannot have two separate septic. If you had enough, I think if you had enough room to do a brand-new septic system, that would put you, you'd have to do two individual septic test holes, have square footage for an additional reserve area, you'd be a whole nother lot.
That's not an ADU project anymore.
Exactly. That's a whole nother.
That's a house.
That's the case.
Put it, just put a new house, yeah.
Yeah, but a two-bedroom, but a two-bedroom, to you, a two-bedroom ADU, or one-bedroom ADU, doesn't require a large septic, okay? So if they wanted to, again, if it was feasible for them to add a small septic system into, for that unit, it would, and it's feasible for them to do that, rather than add to their, to the current one, well, they can add to the current one, but they can do it as a separate, separate unit.
Hold on, hold on.
The building department and. And the board of health.
Yeah, and the board of health. They're going to look at that.
It doesn't have anything to do with the bylaw.
The issue though is, and I, and I, and I know I've been trying to, I mean, I just can't get this now, but I'm trying. The point is that I think that we can't stop it. So meaning whether it's addition, whether it's new, it's going to happen. So it's not like, for example, we're going to town meeting for permission to do ADUs, Mr. Yule, it is what it is. So I feel like, you know, at this point, it's everything we could do without getting laughed out of the state house, pretty much, and, you know.
I think what we're trying to figure out here is, what kind of Pandora's box are we entering, okay?
No, 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 we're already in the box.
It's already, we have no choice but to be in the box.
Yeah, but.
We're just trying to make it better for us.
No, no, I understand. I'm not speaking against it or for it, I'm just, it just, from our end, it just boggles our mind about what we, you know, what we have to do and what we can't do. You know, that's all, I think, so.
But I think what also, what Steve O'Leary said is, as we get experience, as people come forward and try to do the permits, and then the things come up that we just can't think about, we have the ability, we're able to go after it and do something about it.
And there's always, there's always the changing of the law as they go forward. That's the Pandora.
The CPC that have worked very hard.
Thank you.
I certainly.
Thank you all for your hard work.
So just a clarification on the subject. It says where the total number of rooms for a single-family dwelling exceeds eight, so it's for larger homes, not including bathrooms, hallways, unfinished cellars, and unheated storage areas, the number of bedrooms presumed shall be calculated by dividing the total number of rooms by two and then rounding down to the next lowest whole number. So if you have an eight-room house, you have to have a four-bedroom system. But to Mr. Yule's point, keep in mind, upgrading a septic system is not easy. You have to do soil testing, you have setbacks that you have to meet from structures, from property lines, from conservation. There's a lot of things that play in effect, that come into effect when you're upgrading and making a septic system system. It's bigger, it's not easy. So if you already have a septic system on your lot, that doesn't mean you're going to put an accessory dwelling in your soil and your, on your property might not even sustain a larger septic system, so it might be denied that way.
Also, and thank you for bringing that up, this was when we first got presented with this, that it was happening. this, that it was happening. One of the first deterrents is that this is not cheap. Okay? And contrary to Facebook saying that a new septic system's $10,000, you know, in 1965, it's not. So, it is expensive. And you haven't even done the building yet, right? Just, just to do all this. So, I'm just saying that that alone could be a deterrent because, you know, to some of these things. So, but let's, let's do this because we do have one more, and then we have another topic that, you know, I know no one's here to talk about, Item 11, so, um, so Article Two.
Mr. Chair.
I gotta move on.
This is a hearing. I got one more question, Mr. Chair.
Actually, I, I'll allow it, but go ahead.
These state that you need to have one additional on-street or off-street parking space, what happens when the town takes out a building with their winter parking ban?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, you...
You have to have your car, just like the city. You gotta take it somewhere.
You have to have your car on your property during a parking ban. I, I don't know what to say about it.
Yeah, but these you're talking about, it's off-street.
Doesn't change anything from the current restrictions?
Yeah, it's off-street parking, not on-streets. I mean, excuse me, it's off-street parking, so it's not, you're not guaranteed on-street parking anywhere. It says there, "On-street"?
It says on or off.
On-street or off-street.
So, you're...
So, does that mean, though, that you can say no to an ADU permit if you can't provide on-street parking? Like, if you have a house on Main Street?
No.
I'm just, I'm just...
No, no, the on-street parking, I believe, if I'm correctly wrong, Daniel, has to do within the radius of the, of the T-stations in those communities, which we're outside. We're outside of that.
Right, so...
It doesn't apply to North Reading.
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
We talked about it last time.
Located outside, located outside a .5-mile radius, which is the entire town of North Reading.
If it says, go ahead.
Okay. More than one additional on-street or off-street parking space for each protected use ADU on a lot, if all portions of such lot, the entire town, are located outside a .5-mile radius of a transit station.
We require parking, on-property parking?
Well, what it means is that, so the, the half-mile does not apply to us because we don't have any transit area. So, we're in the category of, we have, we're allowed to require one parking space per ADU, but we are not allowed to require more than that for an ADU. That's all that means.
So, no. We are allowed to allow one additional on-street or off-street. So, if they, so, that's a great point. Is there any way to protect ourselves from a Main Street?
Yeah.
Or a North Street, or a Central Street?
Having one.
I'm just spitballing ideas. I, I read contracts for a listing, so this is...
But I have a question, right? You guys have been working on this a lot. This never came up on the street.
The parking stuff did come up, yes.
And what was the, what was the resolution?
That there would be one spot provided off-street.
Off-street.
We never talked about on-street.
Okay. And why, and why does the on-street not apply?
I think because we just don't have on-street parking or a threat. I think that, I think town council, when they helped us add that part, was mimicking the language in the state's regulations.
It seems like, almost like a common sense thing that, you know, I mean, like...
Well, and, yeah, to your point, I get it. You know, like, well, like you said, if someone has one on Main Street and it says off-street parking, and, but yet we have a ban here in town in the wintertime, or really, for any, I mean, who would wanna park on Main Street?
You can park on Main Street anyway.
Good luck, you know?
So, you can.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, like, that's interesting because should that be, like, should, should that be stricken from the...
Maybe we just take out the, maybe we should talk to town council about having, just taking out on-streets. We have no on-streets. I mean, there are people who park up Central Streets.
No, but what I mean is, if, under that notion, I know it's bigger, but that applies to all April, Route One in Saugus. So, what I'm saying is, like, I don't see how the state's gonna come and tell Saugus, like, "Hey, you're not letting someone park by the big dinosaur."
Who's got a house on Route One?
There are, there are.
We have a house on Route One.
There are houses on Route One.
There are.
Oh, maybe it was just a park at ten.
We have a park that'd be in place November 15th, so April 15th is mandatory at town. So, you have to have parking.
That's overnight parking. There's no overnight.
So, you shouldn't be able to grant a building permit if they don't have the adequate parking. So, I think that's something that should be addressed. In the, in the bylaw, that you have to have your off-street parking?
It has to be part of the calculation.
I think what the CPC talked about, and the reason they decided not to change any of the language, was because every dwelling unit requires some parking, and this language just clarifies that unlike our normal zoning districts where we can allow, we can require two parking spaces per unit, we can't require any more than one per unit. So, it would automatically kinda default to our, to the one, because you can't have about...
And has the one ever been challenged? Has the, has the, has the two ever been challenged? Because...
That I don't know. I mean, it won't be...
It could be, it could be.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna say, I completely appreciate what the CPC has done. This is great, great protections for the town in North Reading. I think we should vote for it. If the 25-foot setbacks are gonna, are gonna go through the state, this is a home now. You guys, I say you guys, I apologize, to the people. There are lots, you gotta put a square around a lot and then take 25 feet around that whole lot, and then also within that smaller block, put a house in a septic tank. How you gonna fit it?
I think it's...
And again, we got, we got another town meeting, right? I think Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Waters called it. Everybody, if we need to add something, you know, 'cause I wanna spend extra time in the gym in June, we can do it.
Or we can do it in October before the June update. As many times as we will.
Mr. O'Leary.
I do have a further comment for Mrs. Earl.
Please.
Mrs. Earl, but Chair of the Finance Committee writes, "Voting down the article only makes it easier for ADUs and does nothing to prevent additional students coming into the school system."
Do we know it? Article Two.
If I can ask one final question.
After he reads the Article Two, Mr. Dinaral, you can come up.
Can I ask a question about Article One?
You can get up and then talk about Article One, but we're gonna go to Article Two first.
No, it's on me, but during, after Article Two, you have to ask a question about Article One?
Yes.
You'll talk to me about it?
Correct.
Okay. Um, short-term rentals, Article Two. There have not been any new state laws that change short-term rentals. It's just that in the course of discussion with the CPC and the building inspector, or with these last several months, short-term rentals have come up a lot, because they are not currently defined in North Reading's bylaws, and to date, they've been assumed to be prohibited since they're not specifically allowed and reg, and they've been regulated as such. The proposed bylaw in Article Two adopts a definition for short-term rentals and, short-term rental units, and it provides a timeline of 31 days or less, and that's consistent with state definitions for occupancy. It codifies a prohibition on short-term rental units in all zoning districts. So, essentially, it defines it, it explains what it is, it says how long the time is based on state definitions of occupancy, and it bans it everywhere in all districts.
Okay. So, and a little background, as we discussed last time to anyone, is that we, this is a restriction that could hold up, again, anything we do. You know, we would wanna do it longer, but then we did get clarification that if you go too long, you, you can't. Like, you can't say, "You're gonna be here at least six months," anything like that. So, so that's where this is. And again, doing it where it doesn't get thrown out, and the CPC went through this as well and talked about it. So, I mean, on that one, Mr. Griffin, do you wanna add anything on this?
Yeah, we, we actually, in our last meeting, we had someone who had some property here in town. He brought up some interesting points about having the ability to rent for six months at a time, and then we brought up some issues where, well, then, if you're doing the longer stays, then people might be more apt if they have a child with them, and they go into our school system, and then they move, and they still keep the kid in the school system, and then, there's all these scenarios that we came up with. So, we came, when we talked about the 31 days or less, the, the building department, I talked to someone personally that building department has, brief discussion, was not that in-depth, and he seemed to think that also that was kinda like a good, safe area to be in, because if there is like, and I, I think the big problem was, we were concerned with the abuse of the Airbnb, and like, the constant turnaround and all this stuff, you know, where some, so, there was, there was just a lot of discussion. So, adopting the 31 days was kind of a, I guess, like a happy median, 'cause I, I know we talked about longer, too.
Well, the state has a definition of occupancy and it's 31 days, so we just wanted to make sure we were being really consistent. We weren't sure what would happen if we made it for longer.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, with this year, it was just a little touch and go. It wasn't really, 'cause if this stuff gets abused, then usually the, the people in the town will see the abuse, and they report the abuse. So, like, the Airbnb stuff and all the crazy things, so, there are some failsafes in there, and it seems to work, I guess, you know, from what I understand in my brief discussion, but...
They don't really consider us a vacation town.
No?
Not really.
Yeah, so, they're not, and actually, in town, I think, you know, there's not a lot of Airbnb stuff in North Reading. I think maybe two properties or something like, it's not, so...
So, on this one, just to be a little bit recorded, I'm gonna go to the public, get all the public comment everywhere, and then I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Yule.
Just quickly, Jeff Yule, 31 days sounds good, but can a homeowner, it's not an evergreen contract here, it's a 31 days, can they renew it every month? I don't see a restriction on renewals.
I mean, you're gonna have a month-to-month, that's just like a standard lease.
Right. No, well, so then, so then what's the purpose on, on defining as 31 days? And I, I'm guessing that the idea is to, to prevent someone from renting the place for a long term and calling it a short-term lease?
Well, no, other way, to prevent somebody from coming in from like, just Friday to Sunday, again, like, you know, and then leaving. 'Cause short-term rentals for transients for work, actually, I'll give an example, I gave it at the other meeting. Where my parents live in Malden, the gentleman, instead of selling his house across the street, he moved to Tuxbury and he rents his Airbnb, and because my father's got nothing else to do, will look out the window, he lets me know about all the different vehicles he's seen there the last three years. So, we wanna prevent that, because that can cause other issues, because whenever you get someone new, it's like, if I'm only gonna be here for three days, I don't care. I don't, I'm gonna do what I want, I'm gonna inconvenience who I want, and then I'm gonna be gone. If you're here for 31 days, I mean, typically, you kinda screen your people a little bit more. That's what the thinking is.
Yeah. But, so, so, there's all, I, I don't know the answer to this. Do we have a bylaw that says you don't, you're not allowed to use short-term, uh, short-term rental units? Do we have a bylaw that says that?
No, because people are allowed to lease. I mean, that's not zoning.
See, I'm, I'm trying to get the grasp. I understand the definition. That I understand. But I'm trying to understand the goal here, all right, is to say, you can have a short-term lease, or you can't have a short-term lease?
You can't. You have to rent more than 31 days plus.
Okay. But does that say that in there? I don't, I don't see that in there.
It says 31 consecutive calendar days or less.
That's the definition. That's the definition.
We're defining the short term, and you can't do the short term.
That's what you can't do. Right. So, it has to be more than 31.
One days. Okay. So, where does it say that?
It does, because what we're doing is, we're defining short-term as anything 31 days or less, but you're not allowed to do short-term. That's what this does. So, we defined it as 31 days or less, and this codifies that you can't do short-term.
You can't do 31 days or less.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't see it written there.
Where's it say?
Where does it say that?
It's in the article.
It's in the article.
While no new state laws have changed, short-term rentals, they have been discussed alongside ADUs. I don't know what that means. They had a discussion. I don't even know what the short-term...
Today, assumed to be prohibited, and now you're, you're defining down there. So, that 31 is, is the definition, 31 days or less. And these have been vetted, so like, they're not, you know, it's not...
Mr. Jim, can we just ask the town planner to explain what's in the warrant, which...
Yes. We had no definition for what a short-term rental was previously, so we have to amend our definitions to say what a short-term rental actually is.
Prohibited.
The next step is to prohibit it. We can't prohibit it if we don't have a definition for it. So, that's why we have to define...
So, this is to clarify the, the definition.
Right, right.
And by the way, that's the abridged version, Mr. Yule. When you look at the packet, we got it. It actually does the whole thing. So, it's almost like, yeah, that's the best way to put it. We defined it, and then we made it.
Got it. Okay, that's what I was trying to get to. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna have some sugar. Sorry, tangled on this dinner.
I think I saw a question online.
I, I did. I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to those, too. Please, sir.
I'm gonna touch on a couple of quick things. First of all, Airbnb today, there are rooms rented for a week in North Reading.
People are gonna do what they're gonna do.
Very hard to govern.
Yeah, it is.
Very hard to govern.
Yeah, I, I heard your comment the other night about, or someone's comment about neighbors turn them in. Weston, Endover, Reading, North Reading, all have three- and four-day rentals on Airbnb today. In Weston, for one week, it's $2,125. So, if I rent it for 12 weeks out of the year, that's $25,500. I won't touch on it, but Reading, it's $1,406 for a week. That's $16,872 if you're renting one week out of the year, one week each month out of the year. I don't know if the folks are doing that right now, but I think by limiting it, by making it 31 days, you're telling all these folks, some of whom seem to be citizens, that money that you're currently using to pay your property taxes is gonna go away. It's my opinion. Danielle and I had a brief conversation. We could still go.
What do you mean, "go away"? I'm sorry. Can you clarify that, sir?
Well, if you can't, no, if you now codify it and you cannot rent it for a week on Airbnb, then that, that income will no longer be legal in the town of North Reading. Does that make sense?
Correct.
But it will be in Weston and Endover and Reading and all the surrounding towns. But Reading is the one where it won't be.
Okay.
Which may be what the objective is, I don't know. But it seems unfair to those folks, to me. It just seems unfair to, and maybe they'll be there Monday night and vote this, vote that piece down. I don't really know. Many, many cities and towns require hosts to obtain a permit or license to run a short-term rental. We don't do that in this town because we don't allow it. That is also income, which, and I do have some numbers. Endover charges 6% fee, Middleton is 6% fee, Worth Endover 4%, Tuxbury 6%, Reading 4%, Lynn 4%, and Loubarn 6%. Those are the current fees for short-term rentals. We charge zero, because we don't allow it, so we don't, we don't, sorry, so we don't charge for it. Again, I guess my point is, I think the setbacks in Article One agree. Section Two seems to be, to be an article that maybe isn't needed at this point. So, that's my, that, those are my comments.
And again, we're gonna go to town meeting, and if people agree, they, you know what I mean? It's, it's just, again, it's something where it was another way to look at it that to tax the system less from a standpoint of, I would be curious if these people on Airbnb now have a septic that can handle it, depending on what they're doing. That's why they probably are not gonna come out of the darkness to argue Monday, because then they're gonna get another knock on the door. Just saying, it's the hunch.
But a lot of those, because ADUs are, I'm pretty sure Weston Wells probably doesn't have ADUs. There are rooms in their homes, is what they are. I would assume that that's what that is, and what you're now saying, I guess you're saying the same thing. Reading, you've never, North Reading, you've never been allowed to do them. We kind of ignored that you were doing... you were doing them, or we, we didn't check. But moving forward, you're not going to be allowed to, to do that, and I just think the town is walking away from fees and money.
And how many times has it been on our agenda?
Could help. On the other side, on the ADU side, I assume if I put an ADU, my property taxes are going up.
I, I agree on one thing, but I will say again, and like, people need to make up their own minds.
I also have a few minutes to.
No, no, don't worry about it. I would also be shocked that if I looked at this person's 1040, that they're showing me the $15,000 they're getting from Airbnb a year. So that's the other problem, is that again, I feel that if you're already doing this, you're probably in violation of laws that are much more severe than the $50 fine you would get from North Reading.
I would, so I spent some time on, on Massachusetts site today, Mass Tech, Mass Tax Connect, and looked at the things that you're looking for, what the requirements were. The only time if you do a short-term rental, that you're not required to report to the state is if you're less than 14 days a year. Then there's no taxes, you don't have to collect taxes, and there are no taxes. Airbnb and all the other agencies, the monies that they collect, whatever the town requires, they pay them directly to the town, they're not paying to the person who lives, owns the property, those are paid directly. So whether they're declaring the, the other income is probably a state issue as opposed to.
Again, it's a good thing to look at, and again, Monday, if somebody brings it up, but it just becomes a, it becomes another thing like, a lot of the questions for a lot of the things we deal with in North Reading is, what's one of the main questions? What character do you want in the community? It's a character question. So on Monday, if, hopefully we get 150 people, but if a vast majority or majority want, you know, that's what it is, you just need, you need the other side to come. Mr. Massey?
Basically saying, hey, you guys are, you guys are prohibiting short-term rentals, and you're saying maybe you shouldn't, and that you have an opportunity to be able to make some income with.
I think if a 69-year-old gentleman wants to rent one of his rooms out to, I'm 69, to somebody through Airbnb, and I want to generate $13,000, which will cover my tax bill annually, then I should be allowed to do it. I don't, by the way.
I believe it.
Asking for a friend.
Yeah, right. I'm at the Anderson Westin, I took, I called a friend of mine who lives there, and I said, oh, I know that place, they've got a, the place out back, and they, they rented out, and they make almost $30,000 a year.
I just wonder how many people are not going to, like you said, report it, just take cash and go.
Technically, it's tax-free, but.
I mean, but, but again, that, we're not here for that, I mean, we're not the DOR or IRS, and I definitely.
That's not what this bylaw, that's not what this law is.
But, but okay. It's the 31 days. It, it's, because it, because what it does is eliminate short-term rentals completely. The definition eliminates them completely. I used to travel a lot, and I had a house in Connecticut where I rented a room, and I rented it for 30 days, because I didn't have, I didn't have to pay taxes on it as well. So people renting them, but the truth is, I re-rented it three of the seven days a week to somebody else. So, I just, that's my point, is, is, I think, I just think something that allows reasonable short-term rentals should be considered.
Mr. Yule, I've just kind of, you know, this, the whole ADU thing is a shock to the system, right? With knowledge of that. So let's not, you know, the original intent of ADUs way back was to allow seniors to have family members live and caretaker with them. That was the original intent of ADUs way back before this happened. Now it's just about increasing housing. So we have, we have ADUs potentially coming in, there potentially could be a lot of them. I, I think at this point, it is responsible to the community to not allow short-term rentals, because it's going to be another shock to the system, and people might be compelled to build ADUs simply because they want to get rented. And, and I suggest to you, and there's many communities, and there's condos and associations that have restricted short-term rentals, specifically because they don't want that constant turnover, they don't want to have disruptions to the community. So I think for us to get started, I think it's really important to be as conservative as we possibly can be, including this. We get experience, we find out what happens, again, it could be something to consider in the future. But for right now, just to open up everything is kind of escaping the value of ADUs, which is, I hope that at the end of the day, family members and caretakers will be occupying those spaces and helping to keep our seniors in the house. Because I hope that's ultimately what happens, and it doesn't turn into a commercial, you know, free-for-all. It's kind of, it's not the character of our town. Weston may have decided to do it, other towns may have decided to do it, but I think, you know, we should be conservative, go slow, see what happens, and we can always rethink about in the future. And for the people who are already doing it, they're probably going to continue to do it, so, I mean, you know, they take their chances.
Mr. O'Leary?
No, I, I think, you know, let's not lose sight of what the proposal and why it's here, it's because of the ADU bylaw, it's foisted upon the community here and our reaction to it, and right now, short-term rentals aren't allowed. So we're not looking to allow, we're looking to identify or recognize that it may take place, and it would certainly more likely take place if there's ADUs, because of more, you know, properties available, smaller properties for quick turnover rental. So this, to just avoid the short-term rental thing right now, you know, is probably the most prudent path to take. Now, should we revisit at some point when we're looking for revenue enhancement programs, you know, for the town to raise local taxes through, with the lodging taxes? That's down the road, you know, after things have transpired, but I don't think anybody in town is looking for us to generate any revenue by allowing Airbnb rentals by right or by bylaw at this particular point in time. We haven't had it yet, no one's actually proposed it, and anybody who's participating in that process at this point probably isn't reporting it. So we're not going to get anything out of it either. But for now, because of what we anticipate, an influx of new building, of smaller structures like this, we want to limit it, if it's going to be, and again, rental properties are going to be allowed, and it doesn't have to be relatives, we want to make sure that they're not short-term rentals.
See, a moment, last thing, on Mass Tax Connect, one of the other things they talked about was that if you're an agent, meaning you're not a property owner, although it's property owner's responsibility, if you're an agent and you're renting a room for 31 days, and your agreement with the homeowner is, I'll pay you for every day that I rented, and for the other days, I'll give you a buck, two bucks. And, and I try to figure out whether or not legally.
There are ways around it.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, there are ways around it. No doubt.
Thank you. Did, I, I think.
There is a question. Yep, I'll, I'll read it if you want, just a question from Fred Beater, my microphone doesn't work, does this include the rooming houses in town that go week to week?
No, it doesn't include that, there's language in the bylaw, which is also in the state definition, which would be in our definition, too, not, so these are only, it's not a hotel, hotel lodging house or better practice, so lodging house, hotel housing.
Better set up your business to do that. So we know.
And also, just one thing, and we brought this up, that I, I'd just like to caution that in Massachusetts, tenants have more rights than landlords. So for those not experienced, and if it was open to do it, yep, but for those not experienced, if you have an ADU, if you have something currently, or you develop it for rental, especially like, God forbid, someone older that wants to bring in some money, if they stop paying, you can come to the town, and there's absolutely nothing we can do, and you're going to go to court, and I can tell you that that's going to cost a lot more money than anything you would have made for a decade. So I just want to say that, because I think that, again, it is, you speak to anybody that's owned property and had a land, and had a problem with a tenant, and I can assure you that.
It's no joke.
If you do not want to deal with that, because here's the problem, it costs money to fight. Either that, or you're just going to hope that, that the person eventually leaves. Because, and then if there's a child involved, sell the house, we call it a day.
Yeah, no, it's destroying, I see people destroyed.
Again, we, everyone needs to make their own decisions, okay? I am in the camp, they, you're going to protect yourself from yourself, right? I'm not, like, I don't believe that the government should, at any level, should put in any rule where to protect you from some, no, you got it, you're an adult. But I feel that it doesn't get stressed, because in North Reading, that doesn't happen a lot. I mean, although, yes, Mr. Fillmore, I think you mentioned that, that in the 60s, those with enough money in Beacon Hill just to go to Pillings Pond and Linfield and here, you know, for their summer vacations, I heard, so, I was not around. So again, I just wanted to caution, because I, we've been saying that since the beginning, that it's great, and again, you can make some good money, but no one, Airbnb never tells you that, if it turns into a squatter, we ain't helping. And, and we still expect our cleaning fee. So, before I go back to the board, any, anyone else on this one?
I have a question.
Mr. DeNaro, please.
You know, my feeling listening to this is that townspeople, you know, I, I, I talked to somebody from, from, from NIDA, and they shot this down in the grounds that they thought it was too aggressive, too aggressive.
That was the MBTA, where the two different.
Yeah, I know, but anyway, we're talking the same thing about renting, renting property. So my, my concern is that, and I don't think the town and the state is up to hook if, if we go out and start renting property. You may think that we're, we're on our own, but in the case where you're trying to induce people to bring on 1,700 new homes, stuff like that, we're, we're now a contractor, you're contracting, we're a sales contractor, we're going to find salespeople, if they don't work, we're going to find another salesperson. But if there's something wrong with the language, because we adopted, and the state's not willing to write their language, or you're not, not, you're not, you're not agreeing to indemnifying us, then there's, there's a big, big mess going on. And so, so I just think we're being induced by the state and the town to do this, and the town and the state are benefiting from increased taxes. And the resident is, may see some income, but as you just stated, you, you might as well, you might as well take your, take your first loss and walk away. And so, you know, so there's a problem there. And when you, when you, when you tax the, the new, the ADU, who's responsible to pay the tax? Is it the primary owner, or is it the, or the families living in the ADU?
Whoever owns, whoever owns the property pays the tax, whichever's on the title, that's what gets the bill.
Yeah, so, so in this case, the, you know, the, the resident is forced to become a landlord, who's going to teach the resident how to be a landlord? If we're, if we're contract salespeople for the, for the state, don't, don't we have to get trained in what to say, what not to say?
I don't understand about the contract salespeople. The town is not building the ADUs on anyone's behalf.
No, but, but the town is, is having meetings, talking to people, trying to get, get the, get the attention going, they're getting the, getting, getting the buzz going, and, and it's, it's making it happen. And like you all said tonight, we're already in the box, I know what that means.
It means it already happened, so the town's up to it.
Not us, it's the state.
But, you know, I don't know how it's already happened, you know, I, I didn't vote for it, but anyway.
Nobody did.
None of us did.
Nobody did.
We weren't asked.
To your comments, Mr. DeNaro.
We were not asked our opinion.
I think between this and the, and the MBTA, I think we've all learned, our, our state is maybe turned a little tyrannical with a little heavy hand, so it's very important who we vote for in our, in our state. Remember, this governor is coming up for elections soon.
But what about the questions I asked?
Go to the state house.
Let me clarify, I think I, I think I can take these ones.
Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you. So, two separate issues. The ADU law is going to affect February 2nd. It was voted by the legislature, signed by the governor. That is law, there's no, all we're doing is, we are allowed to restrict up to a certain point to make it a little harder for it to happen, so, so we don't look like, you know, where I grew up in Malden. So, but that's all we're doing tonight. The town is not encouraging, actually, you can make the other way around, that we are discouraging with some of the things we're trying to do within what we can do. So it's, we're doing what we can to minimize the impact to something the state said now by right can happen. That's the best summary I can give.
And can the state force people to, to put an ADU in the property?
No. No, because, no.
What if, what if nobody puts an ADU in the property?
Great, that would be great.
We just spent a lot of time.
Five years later, and the state doesn't care?
No.
They can't do anything about it?
No.
They're just allowing it by right, so the property owners have an opportunity to do it if they choose.
Yeah.
They don't have to take advantage of it, they don't want to. It's not forcing anything.
One last question, so, you say that the property owner isn't, is the responsible party to pay the, to pay the taxes, you know, the taxes in the town. I, I agree with that, I think, that makes, that makes, that makes sense. But, you know, and what, the resident, there's, there's no, there's no, what's the word, there's no silver bullet that they can use to satisfy those taxes without coming up with the money themselves.
I mean, if you don't build it, they will not come.
But there's, now, now the town and the residents are at odds with each other, hate each other, and so it's a whole different thing, we're creating a big, a big mess, we need mastermind to straighten this all out.
Well, thank you. Anyone, anyone else here, before I go to the board? Anyone online?
There was, yeah, there's one comment, does this short, this is from Diane Ely, does this short-term rental law apply to traveling nurses who are usually assigned to a job for three months?
That's.
No, because it's more than 31 days.
That's 92 days or 91, depending on the map.
So there's a limitation, it's limited to 31 days or less.
Right. So that would not apply? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to now bring it to the board for any comments before we move on.
No.
Anyone? Okay, Article 3.
Great. Yeah, there's another one.
I swear, this is easier, this one.
That's what you said last time.
If I'm not optimistic, who will be? Okay, right?
All right.
I'm trying.
You know my commute rate.
Article 3, this pertains to our floodplain district zoning bylaw. So FEMA periodically updates the flood rate insurance maps and regulations for communities in order to allow communities to participate in the national flood insurance program. The town has been notified that this will take place effective July 8, 2025. This bylaw adopts the current requirements of FEMA in order to allow town and residents to remain participants in the national flood insurance program and continue to be able to access flood insurance. If we don't follow FEMA's rules, we will not be allowed to participate in their flood insurance program. And that means adopting their new maps and adopting any new regulatory language that they are required. The bylaws make federally required amendments to the permitting process, including the following new changes, which will be required for all communities. It designates a position in town as the floodplain manager, and in our case, it would be the conservation agent. It requires an administrative permit for any activity in the floodplain, including earth removal and storage of temporary vehicles, that is a change from multi-head rejections. And it retains the current requirements that we already have in place for special permitting for construction in a hundred-year floodplain, and the planning commission is currently the special permit granting authority, and they would continue to be the special permit granting authority with this bylaw. The warrant article is very long, most of this language is new from FEMA, including definitions of. Most of this language is new from FEMA, um, including definitions that we are required to incorporate into our bylaw. Um, it also retains a lot of our old bylaw. Um, it became incredibly confusing and cumbersome to say, delete this and that, because it was sentence by sentence by sentence, and it was impossible to understand. But if you were to go through this, you would actually find, and we do have a redline version that's available on the website and in our files, to see what language actually was retained from the old bylaw. Um, much of this was just added as FEMA requirements. Along with this, we, there's language to adopt, oh, I'm trying to advance this, but I don't think it's advancing.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. Um, this also adopts the new flood insurance rate maps. Those final maps are, we were just notified, they will be dated July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um, so we have a motion available for town meeting that would incorporate that bylaw, because we did not have the date as of the printed in the warrant. Um, the final text of the proposed bylaw was approved as required by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, um, and that is the version that's printed in the warrant, it has been vetted by the state. Um, assuming that this passes, um, passes town meeting, um, it then goes on to FEMA, and FEMA does the final review and approval of it before it takes effect until March July.
So the summary is that if we want to keep being able to take advantage of residents of North Reading for flood insurance, you're going to adopt the new rules.
Yes, and the new maps, yes.
Any questions? Anyone online?
Not seeing any.
Okay, anyone on the board? Oh, sir.
Are the new maps available?
Yes, the new maps are available. Um, they are posted on our, on the planning department website, where we have all of our zoning information. We also have paper copies on file in the planning department. Um, you can look at them online, and there are static maps, where you can just open the maps, look at them, and there's also a before and after comparison map that FEMA has provided for us.
I just to add to that, it, it's not the easiest software to use, and we are awaiting, I think, graphic information from the federal government to then do an overlay and actually be able to specifically identify parcels that have been impacted. But we don't have that information, and we don't expect to have that information for a few months, if I understand correctly.
That's right. Once we obtain the GIS data from FEMA, our GIS coordinator will be able to overlay it onto our town system, and it will be much easier to identify, um, properties that were not previously affected that may now be affected. And we, I have spoken with the conservation agent, who will be our floodplain administrator, um, and we are coming up with a system whereby we will, as the information becomes available, identify those properties that, um, for, you know, whose situations may have changed, and reach out to property owners to make sure that they know that, um, their status on a flood map may have changed, because if you don't hold a mortgage on your house, you may not be notified by anyone ever that you're in a flood zone now, or that you're no longer in a flood zone, you don't need flood insurance.
Look, Tiffany, thanks.
Fran, one quick thing is, if you do go on the, um, website, and you look up a certain address, or it's very pixelated, so it's really tough to look at. You know, so it, it's a little tough when you look at it to see what's what, and there's a lot of trees blocking the property lines and things like that. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's coming, it's coming, yeah, it's evolving.
Are they available yet?
The, the maps are available.
Yeah.
Yes, you can look at them on the website, not just, not just the interactive one, but the actual maps. We have, um, yeah, we can check them out, they're, we are, yeah.
Okay, and, and one other thing too, is we thought it was a good idea to just, you know, because this doesn't happen that often, so we met, CPC got together, we thought it was a good idea to get like the information out on our website, maybe even, um, send letters to certain homeowners that are traditionally in those zones, and the ones that, so, because we're going to have access to all that stuff.
Yeah.
And, you know, what's it cost to send some letters to homeowners? If someone like, if they don't have a mortgage, the bank isn't going to bark at them for flood insurance. So, and if anything were to happen, so, we're, we're working on that too.
I think that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Hashi.
Mr. Dave, would you just find when that new GIS comes into FEMA, would you might post it on the website?
Absolutely, yes.
Perfect. Sir.
Question, Daniel, so that link you sent me the other day, that's the old map?
So, I think you had found the old map, and I sent you the link to the new map.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm really close to that, but I'm not in the zone.
Okay.
Tech, on that, not that, so, and I don't have a mortgage, so, um, but I don't need, need to buy the insurance if I'm not in the zone, is that?
The only?
I'm sorry, which other spot?
No, it's okay, um, my understanding of it is, if you have a mortgage, you can be required by your lender to carry flood insurance. If you don't have a mortgage, it's up to you. Right, it's, it's really your judgment, and you want to do it. I mean, it's, it's up to the owner.
And I'll admit, where I heard that piece was all the last two seasons. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone from our side?
Just, just to clarify, if we don't accept this, some residents in town may deny the opportunity to purchase it?
Yes, in, in July, yes, we have six months.
That's the key point.
We do it on Monday, or we come back and we try it again.
Right, so that, I mean, that's the key point in this, to be my.
And the deadline.
Is that if we don't accept this, some home, property owners in North Reading may be denied an opportunity to get it, and they may have been required to have it from their mortgage.
Right.
So.
It, it's a no-brainer.
And again, years passed, and then the big issue was, as the, the maps changed, some people went in and some people went out, and those that went in were more concerned than those that went out. And some people were carrying flood insurance, and they weren't, wasn't necessary anymore. And that's why the efforts that are being put forth now to just send the letters out, let people know, take a look at it, is a hundred percent better than it was. So, the key thing for Monday night is to just let people know that in order for people who are required to have it by their mortgage lenders, or want to have it, you know, if they have a home that's in a floodplain and don't have a mortgage, and want to have it, they're not going to have that opportunity if this doesn't pass.
Correct.
That's all.
And the thing is too, the CPC recognized that the deadline for this is July or Ju- June?
It's July eighth.
Yeah, so we, we're just being proactive with this and pushing this out as quick as we can. Yeah.
If we wait until June though, we don't leave a lot of time for FEMA to approve it after town meeting, because town meeting is so late in June.
Right, good feedback. Anything else?
Question, is, is, let's say, for some reason we don't pass it, and you're required on your mortgage to get it. Is there such a thing as private flood insurance? Is there even such a thing as that?
I don't know the answer to that.
I would, I would think there would be.
It is.
But I would think that it would be very expensive.
I think it's really expensive.
Yeah.
It'll be more expensive than the expensive insurance system way.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure.
I just wondered, you know, if it all falls apart.
But less expensive than to replace your house, if you.
So I was, I live in Martins Pond, when I first bought my house, it was.
I know, it's the mic, I, oh, can I just, yeah, no, I just, well, he's going to go there, though.
Yeah, so when I first came to Martins Pond in nineteen ninety-one, when I bought the house, it was required. I did get my insurance, then years later, three years after they changed it, the bank said, you don't have to do it anymore, they didn't tell me for three years, and now I don't know if I'll have to be doing it again. But anyways, it's, it was.
We'll send you a letter.
It was contingent.
You're on the list. You'll be doing it by the way, the other.
But it was contingent, you couldn't buy, you couldn't buy into the house if you didn't have it. Because you had to have insurance, or else the bank would give it to you.
Sir.
Fran Hashi again. What method did FEMA use to determine the zones?
So FEMA has a long list of different methods that they use. I, there's hydraulic analysis, there's, you know, they do topographic analysis, they do survey work. Um, they actually have a really interesting and helpful website that explains all of the different methods. They also use previous records from, um, people who have filed letters of map change. The ones that are considered to still be valid are, have been worked into the new maps. There are others that were on the edge that are no longer valid, and those have not been worked into the new maps, but they have a lot of factors that go into it. And, um, we, we have their site linked to ours to explain. Um, it, it does go beyond my understanding of all.
So they didn't, they didn't do an actual ground survey?
In some cases, they, they probably do, it depends on the area. I don't know if North Reading has any areas like that, but, um, they have a lot of different methods of survey, yeah.
I think it depends on experience too, as they acquire new data about how the flooding works, it affects their.
Yeah, well, the, the data has known to be woefully bad, so.
Well, it is a moving target, I mean, I can attest to that, that's for sure, it has moved.
FEMA should focus on North Carolina and California.
Mr. Chair, one point to that. They also, um, if you're, if you happen to be someone who was not in the floodplain, and now on the new map you are in the floodplain, you can challenge that, you can hire an engineer, you can, you know, if the elevation of your house or whatever, so it doesn't mean that it's a slam dunk, you, you're there. You can challenge that, and you can apply back, uh, and, you know, whether they grant it, and I don't know, I'm not totally specific on it. So, it doesn't mean just because that they say you are, you can't challenge it, and, because we all know how expensive flood insurance is. But anyways, I just wanted to mention that too.
That's good information, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Article Four. We good?
Is that decided for CPC?
You good, Daniel?
Yes, yes.
Yes, they want to go home.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job doing the homework for many years, not once to come up with this.
You're not going to stay?
But, uh.
Oh, I'm going to sit right over here. I'm not going away.
What are you, Danny?
He's a frequent flyer.
This is boring. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, for your, Mr. Chairman, Article Four, who just pulled up my slide here. To you, Mr. Chairman, Article Four is for town meeting to authorize, uh, the select board to enter into payment in lieu of tax agreements for renewable energy generation storage facilities. Would authorize the select board to enter into such agreements with private entities that install renewable energy generation or storage facilities. In this case, it's Kearsarge River Park LLC, they have obtained permits to construct a battery storage facility at five hundred River Park Drive, and they have proposed a payment in lieu of tax agreement. As we put in the warrant, entering into such an agreement allows the property owner and the town to extend the depreciation period for taxable value of the equipment to be installed, which creates a more stable tax revenue stream over a longer period of time for the town. Uh, the article is written would allow the select board to enter into an agreement of up to twenty years for the term of, for such depreciation, and, um, those terms are subject to final negotiation after town meeting approves the warrant article. Select board recommended, the community planning commission has recommended, and the, um, I'm sorry, they did not recommend, they did not vote on that. But the finance committee has recommended, I don't know if my CPC is on there. Select board and finance committee have both recommended.
I'll do the same thing like the last article, go to the public first. Any questions? Mr. Mackey, please.
Kevin Mackey, eighteen Adams Street. Do we know, I know we're going to get a longer, um, more consistent, um, tax revenue. Do we know what happens if they go under, say, like year two?
Like payment?
Yeah, like, say, it's business, and they, they don't survive. So we're supposed to get more money upfront, and, but they want it over a more consistent period. Do we know what happens if for some reason they don't make it to the end of the?
I mean, my suspicion, again, I'm not the assessor, but my suspicion is that if they're not paying the taxes, that they would be subject to whatever enforcement authority that might have with regard to the property. So if they're not, if they're not taxing, we have the ability to recover the revenue, pursue it. I think what's more likely to happen is they're going to convey the property to somebody else who is going to be able to use it. We, we do have one of these in town already, uh, it's located behind its BW garage, and we entered into an agreement six or seven years ago. They have been making payment on it, um, and it's provided a stable revenue stream for us. They're also partnering with Reading Municipal Light, so I think there's some level of assurance there as to their stability, um, as well by virtue of that.
Anyone else? Anyone online? I do not see anyone. Anyone on the board?
Yes, Mr. Gilbert, I believe you said up to twenty years, correct?
That's correct, yeah, we made that change in the warrant after the discussion of last meeting.
What is in the warrants is twenty or more years?
Oh, I, did I misstate that? I, well, I think we were looking for more than twenty, I may have misstated that. I think we wanted to, I think I just stated it wrong, the discussion we have with the select board, we added it twenty years specifically, and the board wanted the ability to extend it. So it'd be longer than twenty years, so now it's more than twenty years. Because if you shorten it, you're, you may be sort of preventing yourself from getting additional revenue in the longer period of time.
Give future forward flexibility.
Mr. Chit, Mr. Leir, wasn't that one of our concerns about depreciation, trying to decrease the years to be able to reevaluate? Something along those lines, no?
Mine was more shorter rather than longer.
Right.
Mine was shorter rather than longer, and also to revisit it during the time period, so that as they replace the assets, and the value of those assets is substantially more than what they were, we'd be able to capture some of that, so. But, we were also informed that the statute is twenty years.
That's right.
Not less.
Exactly.
So, my, the point that I was trying to make is, from a cash flow standpoint, from an economic standpoint, from a depreciation standpoint, from a income standpoint.
Making sure we get our best penny for our buck, yeah?
So it's, uh, and, and knowing that, you know, you talk about batteries here, so the battery life and the technology is changing rapidly, the value of the assets, my guess, are, the assets themselves are going to be switched out before this is now paid for. And we may be, we're getting something that we wouldn't normally get, but we're not getting everything we're entitled to. And what it does is, we give some surety to, to the owner of the assets, as far as what the, the cash flow is going to be and their obligation to the community, with a set dollar amount to be paid out over twenty years.
So, I, I completely agree with you.
But it didn't, it didn't appear as though the state statute necessarily allowed for that type of review.
Is that what we left off? Can I?
The statute.
Yeah. So, we did amend it, to do a lot for both. So the way it reads, it's for. Can you share your screen?
Yeah, so, so I think he amended the, the language to statute, to read the statute, and allow us some flexibility if under the law we.
Understood, I just want to make sure we're consistent, because I see up to twenty, and then heard different, so I just want to make sure that we get our ducks in a row leading up to Monday. It's actually both, you'll see the language I'll show you. You see it states from about halfway down, um, durations of time as determined by the select board to be in the best interest of the town, including terms of twenty or more years. So I think that gives us the flexibility that the board was looking for, one way or the other. Remember, we joked, nice and vague with the state? Oh, yeah, yeah. But if it's statutory, is that even binding? We had to make the change on the fly, denied a town meeting. The town council has not flagged it as an issue at this point in time, but.
Yeah, and, and I think what happens is, when you enter an agreement with somebody, you know, sanitarily, it allows for this, the twenty years? And again, I think this was probably lobbying for by these, this industry, to get it put into place.
Yeah.
But if we're looking to get it to an agreement for something less than that, and they agree to it.
No, it's, I'm good, I'm not sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else? Article, uh, what article?
Hi.
Article Five is for a prior year bill. Um, we had put in the warrant, I think it was a hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety or sixty cents.
Sixty-five cents.
Um, there's a smaller number that's now being proposed, uh, it's eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents, and that's because only a portion of the bill is actually from the prior fiscal year, if I understand that correctly, Sunny.
Twenty invoice was paid, um, in front of the invoice said eighty-something, and the total invoice was a hundred and sixty-something, and it was paid for, council was owed pretty, in front of the bill instead of the total bill, it wasn't part at the DW level, and it wasn't part at the finance level, so we owe eighty-six something.
Eighty-nine sixty, yeah. So, and that's the portion that's from the prior year.
Certainly, pennies from the dollar, I just, I, I don't care of the amount, frankly. But, uh, I think last town meeting, we had a, a prior year bills for train cleaning, it was like ninety bucks or something. But, the, the only issue I would say here is, can we at least identify what the bill is for?
It's seriously.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter either way, what it's for.
Sure, sure, so we intended to, I'm not sure. Sure, sure. So we're intended to, I'm not sharing the screen.
Just to get the transparency.
Yeah, so it's an invoice for a short waste disposal. In this case, it's a Steris like contractor. Is it a Sharps disposal?
It's a Sharps disposal, they're buying at the police station.
And it would be paid out of this year's sanitation budget as a motion. Any questions?
Does it say that it's taken, proposal is taken out of sanitary?
The motion will say that, and in that, just presentation, we should have.
The article isn't gonna mean...
We're missing some minor details. We should try in the future to get it.
So that's the slide. Certainly add where is proposing to take them. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Not seeing any.
There you go. Okay. Article six. Article six would need to amend fiscal year 2025 operating budget. No amendments were anticipated at the time the warrant was published, and we continue to not project that there would be any amendments required. So if the select board wants, it could vote to recommend passing over this article tonight, and the same issue for Article seven when we get to it. I'd love to. Any questions by the public on this one? Okay, anyone online? I'm not seeing any. Any board member? Mr. Massey can have a motion.
This is, this is on what?
Article six, just to pass over.
Pass over, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article six, and then fiscal year 2025 operating budget.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roberto, Article seven. Mr. Chairman, through you, the final article, Article seven, was placeholder for amending the fiscal year 2025 capital budget. We've represented at the last meeting that no amendments were, were anticipated to be proposed. Subsequently, we had a meeting of the capital improvement planning committee, and we did identify a potential shortfall in funding for the library HVAC project. The committee voted to recommend to the select board that we fund the difference or whatever amount is required in order to complete the project. Since that time, we've had multiple meetings in the PPW and with the contractor, and unfortunately, we're not able to project what that dollar amount is at this point in time, A. B, the initial scope of the project that we were talking about is no longer being, is no longer eligible under the federal program that we were qualified for, and this is more tied to the type of refrigerant that we're supposed to use for heat pumps. So the bottom line is that we are not proposing any recommendations for modification or amendment to this article. But I do need to let the community know that we are facing challenges with the library HVAC project. We had hoped to be able to go with heat pumps and ultimately be able to rely more on the HVAC system for heat and less on the boilers, but we're facing a number of challenges with this. And there is the possibility that we're not able to complete the project in time for the upcoming summer. We're trying to take advantage of a series of different funding sources, including rebates from National Grid, but we run into challenges that we're trying to solve. I don't want to elaborate too much, because in the end, we're talking about something we're not voting on at town meeting tonight, but I do want to let folks know that that's, that's something that's being worked on in the background. And we'll definitely have multiple discussions about it, so, you know. As will the capital improvement, yes. Any questions online? Not seeing any. Board? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article seven, amend fiscal year 2025 capital budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Agenda eleven, finally, an easy one.
Should I just make a suggestion on?
On number eleven?
Number eleven?
No.
No. This is, this is on, number ten. If there's going to be an amendment proposed to the bylaw, and I know it's a number of pages in the whole thing, and it's not as printed in the warrant plus this, you know, there needs to be an easy way to indicate to the voters that are there and us where it's being inserted and what the language is, rather than just putting it up on the...
You're talking about that one we did for the article one?
Correct.
Correct.
And if, and if the planning commission comes up with any other amendments that they're looking to do, that should be included in a handout, you know, at town meeting, so the people can have it in front of their face.
Yeah.
At the beginning of the meeting, before it comes up.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear.
He wants anyone that comes forward with an amendment to give endos?
No, no, we talked about the one we just did.
I have no control, I have no control over individual members who attend any town meetings. But what I'm saying is, town boards, amazing commissions, if we're gonna be doing that, and this is substantive, substantive article, we should just give it to...
Because we already have, no, the one, the one, Mr. Griffin, yeah, I don't even, I don't even know what he's saying, though. But that's what he's saying, just to include that as a, as a handout.
As a handout, as a handout at town.
Because it's not in the meeting, we didn't know.
Because what we're talking about, what's been proposed this evening, and appears as though the planning commission is gonna do, is they're going to include it in the main motion. They're gonna include it, not as an amendment, they're gonna include it in the main motion, and then explain it's gonna be just printed in the warrant plus this, all right? And plus this should be shown where it's gonna be in the article and what it is, because that's the main motion. It's not, it's not the main, we're trying to avoid taking a vote on an amendment, presenting the main motion, then presenting an amendment, then voting on the amendment, then voting on the main motion as a method. They're gonna make one motion theoretically, I hope. That's all. I just want to put it in front of people so that they know, so that people don't feel as though someone's trying to pull a fast one on them, and actually, you know, this is the foundation of that.
That never happens with the administration.
Not at town meeting. Not, not intentionally, that's for sure.
Just to say like last town meetings.
Like every town meeting.
So I, it's just a suggestion. Nobody wants to take it, that's fine, but I think we, we know, we know that the main motion's gonna be different. Give it to the people who vote.
Agenda, article, yeah, eleven.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is an update on the Greenway rail trail progress and potential proposal for letter of support for state past trails grant application. We're joined by Phil Hertz.
Who's a member of the land utilization committee here on behalf of the land utilization committee to present something that was reviewed and forwarded to the select board by vote of the land utilization committee meeting on Tuesday night. They were joined by, they were joined by in four residents, fifteen or twenty, some of whom are here tonight for a second night this week, to discuss this. And I think they heard a lot of feedback and, you know, had a good discussion. And I think there's some encouraging news, but there's obviously some concern as well about this project, and I think Mr. Hertz is prepared to present. I do have your presentation on there, Phil.
Before we begin on this, it is not a public hearing. However, because there could possibly be a select board vote on an important grant, I am going to allow limited, non-circular commentary on it, even though it is not a public hearing. So if somebody makes your point, if you could try not to make it again, but, so just, just so everyone knows upfront that I will allow, only because I think it's important that if the board is gonna vote, we have to hear from people. I'm not comfortable voting a vote on without... Oh, yeah. I, thank you. I did not close the public hearing. Now it's, now it's closed. Okay. Hertz, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Okay, I, I don't think you're going to need to vote on anything tonight for, for this particular project, but I think the purpose is just to update you on, on where we are. So, just bring up the first page of the map on a presentation. Go to the, go to the first page. Yeah, there. So, the earlier project was a, was a three-mile trail going from Linfield through neighborhoods and ending up at Ipswich River Park or going to Chestnut Street. This is a far smaller, shorter section. The purpose of this project is to create an access from Elm Street, Route 62, into the, the property that was acquired in 2005, which we are now referring to as River Woods, and to build a bridge over the river and the marshlands into that land, and then connecting to the rail bed, which is primarily in Linfield. What, what has changed and what wasn't possible three years ago, five years ago, when we looked at it before, is Linfield had, there was no access into the rail bed from Linfield. So Mass, one of the requirements for Mast dot to get, to get funding for Mast Lot to build this very expensive bridge was the trail couldn't end in the woods. And since Linfield didn't have any, there's no way to get out of Linfield, we had to have an input, an entrance and an exit within North Reading. And then, that's why the other, the previous version was going through all these neighborhoods. Linfield now has access to Main Street. If you feel that the lower, the lower right-hand portion is a piece called, is Woodlot in Linfield, and that's a Greenway property that, that Linfield has acquired, and it can, and it will provide access into the rail bed. So now, we can, we can have a single entrance point in North Reading on town-owned land without going through any neighborhoods and connect to the rail bed in Linfield, and that rail bed would connect eventually out to Main Street. And from Main Street, you can get to the Independence Greenway, which gets you access to the whole border to Boston Trail Network. So what we're proposing is to do a joint project with Linfield. We've been in discussions with the town planners in Linfield, and they're, they're quite excited about doing it. And both Linfield and North Reading are in the process of preparing a grant application to Mast Trails for 2025. That could, in North Reading's case, it could be up to $500,000. Linfield has, it's a far smaller project in Linfield, because they don't have any bridges they need to build, they just need to upgrade some trails. So there, there's, there's much easier, but I think they're going after $100,000 or $150,000. And this is not for actually building the bridge, building the trail or building anything, it's just for the first phase of planning. So I'm anticipating that the first phase of planning is going to be in the order of $500,000 or $600,000. I don't have a hard number, but it's, it's probably, it's probably in the $600,000 range. And so we're applying for a $500,000 grant, for which North Reading would need to match 20% of the total project. So if we assume we got a $500,000 grant, we would have to contribute $120,000, which we don't know whether we would get a half a million dollar grant. We might get nothing, we might get half of that. So whatever we get, we would tailor the planning project around what we get, and then go to town meeting in October to see, to see if the town would be going to vote for the, for the matching funds. If it's likely, if we got less than the amount that would be required to go through the first phase of planning, then we would go through subsequent rounds of grants in different years, and it would just take longer to get through it. Linfield's been doing this, not on this rail trail, Linfield has a different rail trail, north-south rail trail, that they've been working on for years, and they've just been going to grant, round after round and round of grants to get their project done. So the, the longer picture would be there's two phases of planning. This is the first phase of planning, and then you go back to Mast dot. We've already spoken to Mast dot informally, and they think, they like this, they like the idea of this project. They really support projects that are work, multi-town projects, where two towns, two or more towns work together to a common end. And they particularly like a project that connects new towns to the greater, the greater Massachusetts Trail Network. And we check those boxes. So the, the idea would be to meet all the, all the planning requirements for Mast dot, and then, so there's two phases. Again, this is the first phase for the Mast dot planning. Then Mast dot gets involved again, and they say, oh, you did this right, you did this wrong. Then you go back and you do the final phase of planning, which is actually the detailed construction designs, and that's probably about the same cost again, sort of $500,000 or $600,000. At which point, when that's done, Mast dot says, okay, you, you need to do a little bit more, or you're really, you're really there. And then they, at which point, once they finally say you're really there, they take the project over. And they own the construction, they own everything from that, from there on. So, so once we finish the planning, Mast dot would build the bridge, they would build the trail, it'd go North Reading and presumably Linfield, and connect to the, connect to the street. The very, what makes this really expensive, Linfield, Linfield is simple, because it's all flat, there's not that much wetland involved. They probably could do it without Mast dot. It might cost them less than, less than a million dollars to probably put in the whole thing. They could probably do that with a regular grant. North Reading, it's much harder, because we have to go over the Ipswich River. When, when that, when the property that was owned formerly by Bill Smith was acquired, originally, there was an easement on, on a bridge that belonged to Bill Smith that would have given the town access into, into that property. But that easement was given up to make the litigation go away, and Smith was proposed. So there's, there's no easy way, there, there's no, the town has no, no way into this land. And at this point, 20 years has gone by, and it really wouldn't matter. Even if we had the Smith Bridge, it would, it's so dilapidated, it would probably have to be totally rebuilt anyways at this point. You'd still be looking at about the same cost, which is probably in the $5 million range for that bridge. So if you think about this, that if we get, if we get a series of grants, and North Reading has to chip in, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, two or $300,000, we would eventually get a bridge and a trail that, that, that cost $500,000 or $600,000. So basically a tenfold return on whatever the town puts in. That's not to say that, that it's cheap. It still means going to town meeting in, in October, or a year from now, or whatever, and asking for this, this money, and perhaps multiple times, almost certainly multiple times. But in the end, you'll have access to this, to this wonderful land. Go to the pictures of that. I'm not sure how many of you people have actually ever been in that land that was acquired. That's, that's what it looks like. The, the, all the pictures of the wooded area with exclusion of the upper left, which is pebbly, that's all, that's all basically the River Woods, or, or the area in Linfield that's right adjacent to them. It's beautiful land. It's 50 acres. It's, it's a parcel that's bigger than Ipswich River Park. And this, by gaining access to this land, you're basically giving North Reading an entirely new park. And it's not gonna be with ball fields, but I can't imagine it would be with ball field. And, but it's basically, you know, it has trails in there already. The trail that we're proposing to build would be a paved trail, but there's, there's dirt trails in there already. So it, we're talking about something that would be of huge benefit to, to the town with, with, with an expense. So the only, the only other, so there was, in terms of what we talked about that needed to get done. One was a letter from North Reading to Linfield in support of their project. And the LUC voted that we could issue that letter under the LUC auspices, and that letter was issued and sent to Linfield earlier this week under, under the LUC banner. So if, if, if the select board wants to issue a second, a separate letter, they can, but it's, it's not, it's not necessary. There is the, a grant. The grant is due next week. It's due technically February 3rd, but I need to file the grant, and I'm gone, so the plan is to submit the grant application on, on Tuesday. Now, the grant, that's a grant for half a million dollars through Mast Trails, which is not Mast dot, it's Mast Trails, it's a separate organization of the state. They allow up to half a million dollars. You have to apply... You have to apply by February 1st to February 3rd this year. They, they don't inform who gets what until sometime in June. So there's no way, if we got money, there's no way to get it into the June town meeting, so it's really, it's really October. If, if in October, the town voted not to fund, not, not to do matching funds, then we would simply go back to the grant, the MassTrails, and say the town didn't vote for it, and we can't accept the grant. And if for some reason, since there's a deadline to get the grant in next week, if for some reason between now and June, the town decided that they really don't want the grant, we could, we could pull the grant. So having it go in next week isn't, isn't the end of it, if for some reason, people could, the, the, the select board decided that you didn't want to go forward. And I think the only other piece that came up, and that only came up in the last 24 hours, is to submit the grant, there's a question in the grant, that if you're doing a trail on a municipally-owned piece of property, the municipality needs to do, to sign, to sign a document saying that there's permission to do the, to do the grant, to do the, to do the trail, which is, to me, doesn't make any sense to this, North Reading, doing a North Reading trail, but I, I, I've given that to Mr. Gavertow.
I haven't read it.
No, I know, I know, and I, I only got it this afternoon. So that, that's pretty much it.
So I'm going to take the comment, but first I'm going to start with the select board on this one, just because it wasn't a public hearing. And then I'm actually going to be here with Mr. Walner, because, you know, if you have any commentary.
You can go back to the map.
You might ask everyone.
Might go back to the map.
That one?
No, the other one that he, he was talking about, the guy right there. So I just want, just want everybody to be clear. First of all, this, this started in September of 2016. I was actually approached with Jeff Uhl, we were at an Apple Festival, and that's a woman named Sarah Wyner came up and told me about this trail, which I had no idea about. And then Phil and I met about a year or two later, took him on a bike ride out there. I had no idea that this even existed, and it was actually due to take my bike out. And he also fixed my bike at the same time, which was very nice. So just so everybody knows physically what this is, here's 62 Elm Street. This is the section that he's talking about connecting to an already existing trail that's already there. And so what we would get out of it is access to the Smith property, which we never had access to, it's been 20 years, like you said, it was January 20 years ago. And we would get a bridge that would allow us to get in there, and we would also get a parking space, I think for about 16 vehicles to go. That has, that's to be deep, but could be, could be 16. Something like that. It would give us the parking space, so that way the neighborhood would not get that. And then, once you get into here, it's a straight path, it is all gravel at this point. And you're in Linfield at this point, and again, up until recently, we didn't have access to go through Linfield, because they said if you go in there, you're trespassing. Now they've changed it all around because they also want to preserve this area from development, which is why they did. And then you come into Bostick, there, we're making plans to cooperatively work with Bostick, Linfield's doing the same thing, so we can get around their plant, they're taking down their dam, that's something they're going to be taking, so we're going to have a path through here. And then the, the gem of it all is to get an independent freeway, and then you're on the North Shore, and there's all these trails that go, go on beyond it. So it's really, you know, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to access into all these trails that are going on. And so I just wanted to make sure to emphasize that. Phil has put a tremendous amount of time into this over the years. I think this is a very conservative proposal, and the goal is to, you know, at some point bring it to town to have them vote on it. We've had more details, but that's kind of the goal at this point.
Thank you, Massey. Any questions?
Yes. The, is this, is this, this is separate from Swan Pond?
This is totally separate, yeah, totally separate project, yeah.
Swan Pond's all in North Reading?
Yeah, yes, yeah, it's a totally separate.
This bridge, do, do you have any idea what kind, how big, what's, what's it spanning over?
It's two, I think it's 200 feet by 12 feet. It's going to be prefab, I'm not quite sure exactly what that means. It needs to be 200 feet because not only needs to go over the river, it needs to go over quite a bit of marshland. And there's also, to be handicapped accessible, it needs to be no more than 5% grade. So it's pretty steep there, so it needs to go otherwise. That's why I'm saying, even if we had the Smith property, the Smith Bridge, you'd still have to tear it down and, and build something new.
Do you think that bridge is in the $5 million range?
Well, about three to five years ago, when we were looking at it, we were looking at this bridge and a couple of other bridges the same size, and the total project was going to be like 15 to 18 million dollars. So yeah, I think the bridge is going to be in the $5 million. I'll find out. There was one other item that we voted on, was to use up, we went to town meeting in 2019 to get money for a feasibility study on the much longer trail, and then we got a grant for another $45,000 from MassTrails. So we had $95,000 for a feasibility study starting in 2020. And we used all of that money except for $8,500, which remains. And so the contractor, the consulting service, BSC, that did the original feasibility study, has agreed to update the feasibility study, which immediately means it's taking 90% of it away, because this piece was actually in the original feasibility study, it was only a small piece of it. So they're, they're going to modify the original feasibility study, and they're going to prepare a new application for MasCOT to get on their project list, which is not a commitment to do the project, it's just you're, you're on the list, and you have, they assign you a number, and you're going to have meetings.
Understood. What is the proposed funding source?
The funding source, well, again, there's, there's, there's two phases of the funding. There's the, there's the planning phase, which, you know, there's two, two phases of planning. The first phase is what we're trying to get into now, and then there's a second phase, and then there's the construction phase. The construction phase, which is the $5 million or $6 million, that's paid for by MasCOT. The planning phase, which, the first two phases, which is, as a rule, they say 20%, it's going to be 20% of the construction cost is planning. That's the responsibility of the town. And so the responsibility of the town, the town can simply pay it, or the town can pursue grants from other state organizations, or there's other, there's other, there are other organizations too, that can provide grants to offset the town's responsibility. So that's what the grant that I'm, that's being applied for next week, is to try to offset as much as possible whatever the town's responsibility.
Understood. So North Reading would pay only for the studies of it?
Yes, that, that.
In the construction, so even the bridge would be paid by the state?
Right, so the, the, any town that works with MasCOT, they're responsible for all the planning and the permitting, and, but, but the actual construction, the materials of the construction, the whole supervisory, everything with the construction is, is MasCOT. And, you know, they, they take their pound of flesh because the planning process is non-trivial.
All right, all right. Thank you. How many miles is the trail just in North Reading?
It's, it's like 3,400 feet, 3,300 feet, that, that's the number that I saw. I, I measured a straight, I measured that straight line. If you, if it actually went that straight line, it's actually less, it's like half a mile, but I, it's probably not going to be a straight line because there's wetlands in there. That there is, that little orange line is an existing trail, so it's theoretically possible that it follows the existing trail for a while and then branches off. But the consultant is using, is using $3,000 somewhere.
So, yeah, so half a mile, three quarters of a mile max?
Yeah, something like that.
Paved trail?
A paved trail, so it's handicapped accessible.
Now that I learned that the state would be funding the construction, the design costs obviously significantly less, I am interested, just, what do you, did you say $120,000 in maps?
The, no, the, the design costs, as a rule of thumb, design, which is in two phases, the total design and just for part one and part two, generally is 20% of the cost of the construction. So I don't know if it's instructions, 5 million, or 6 million, or 7, but assume it's 20% of that. So that's the responsibility of the town.
Including like, including Linfield?
No, no, Linfield's going to do their own thing. Theirs is much smaller because they don't have a big bridge. They're just, and, and their trail is on that, that rail bed, you could run a grader on it and bring an asphalt in, it's, it's really, it's much simpler. No, Linfield's, they're all, they're all doing their own thing.
The, understood. The, so it's about, I'm just, I'm just using round numbers from percentages to, so it's about one, one and a quarter, one and a half million dollars for about half a mile of trail? Now, just studying.
Be, yeah, be, well, it would be, let's say, let's say it's half a million dollars, so then there'd be, there'd be, yeah, there'd be about, about a million dollars, there'd be a million dollars of, of, of planning costs for $5, $5 million. So it'd be six, yeah, $6 million for half a million. But, but almost all of that cost is in the 200 feet.
Understood, yeah, understood, thank you. The, the, the Smith property, does this limit the town's potential use of that property in the future?
That, that, that question came up on, on Tuesday. It, it doesn't, it doesn't limit, there's no legal limitation, but if you put, this, this bridge is not going to be a road bridge, it's going to be a pedestrian bridge that's strong enough to take an ambulance or a pickup truck. So it, this bridge does not allow, you couldn't put a senior center, say, in, in, on the property with that bridge. You'd have to build another bridge or tear that bridge down to, to, to gain access to a building. But there's nothing preventing that.
I wonder how the town can, I'm wondering how the town can get benefits, so I'm trying to think how we, yeah, so if it wouldn't allow really vehicles outside, I'm trying, trying to think if you go, I'm just thinking, I'm, not that I am for or against this project, yeah, but I, it's, if the weight capacity of this bridge that you're talking about won't allow potential future development, do you bulk up the bridge? And I don't want that cost, trust me, but I, I, I wonder for the potential future.
I'm not an engineer, but I would assume that a bridge that could take a couple lanes of traffic, like, you know, something big enough for a couple of school buses to pass on it, I think you'd probably look near $20, $25 million.
Well, we're, we're, we're building Chestnut Street Bridge for.
Well, this is much longer than the Chestnut Street Bridge.
The grant, have we, have we applied for a grant for the Swan Pond?
No.
Trent?
There's no intention to do that, actually.
No intention to ask for grants, okay. This, this grant program, you said, hey, if, you know, state with grant is the money, if the people vote no, give it back. Is there any way that we could potentially say, hey, the people voted no, however, the people in North Reading have chose to decide to go a different direction, and maybe spend somewhere else? Would we, I'm, I'm, could do both, right? But I'm just wondering, depends what the people say at town meeting. Are we able to move that grant to another spot like Swan Pond?
Yes.
No.
It goes back to free cash?
No, the grant's, the grant's very specific.
It's specific.
The grant is, I can show you the grant, I've pretty much filled it out, it's for a very specific purpose.
Understood, just trying to.
Yeah, no, it's not a, they're not.
It's a collaboration with another community.
They vote on it.
It's a collaboration.
There's a lot of deliberation, it's voted on for the merits of a very specific project.
It's a collaboration with another community, that's why.
It's a good question.
Understood. I would just think, I would just think for the future of the town, there's, that's a big, we don't want to, we don't want to take 50 acres away from our potential.
No, no, I understand it. I mean, much of it's wet, I mean, probably half of it's wet. But yeah, it's, it's, it's come up before, would you, could you put the senior center there, could you put another school there, could you put another fire station there? But the cost of the bridge to get in there.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
You also have to. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Thank you for this. I love the idea of a trail before, but not the idea of infringing on people's properties. So this is a way better case scenario. My question is, so there's Pleasant Street off of Elm. It's across the street from Pleasant, that opening?
Yes.
How close are their houses to that opening? Are they close, are there houses right on top of that?
We'll go to the last page. Okay, so, up there. So that's looking from Pleasant Street to where the, where the parking lot's going to be up, up above, right, sort of behind the stop sign. And then if the picture there, that mailbox that you see there, that's, that's 235 Elm, that's, that's access to the Smith Bridge, but that's, the bridge isn't being used, so there's no, there's no house there.
Which mailbox is that?
It's the Smith, Smith's?
Well, just.
What is Smith's?
Like this.
It is my box, of course it's my box.
There's a power plant.
Those are power lines.
And there's, and there's a house, there's a house that's further down where that, we see that pickup truck, and there's a house in the process.
So where the pickup truck is, there's a house.
There's a house there, right.
And then how far on the other side of that mailbox?
Right there. On the other side, oh.
Eastally?
It's quite a ways, because it's, it's, it's wet, the town owns, if you go to the map, you can see.
Can I, can I just piggyback a question about this? Is it the same as like, I have one where I am, after my neighbor's house, there's that little, right before McIntyre, you know, I'm talking about that bridge that?
Goes, yeah.
Yeah.
Goes to Linfield, yeah, goes to the Linfield.
What kinds of fun things, but is it, is that the same type of entrance? Like, is it going to be that close to the house? Because that was pretty close to the neighbor's property, so that's what I'm just.
I mean, I, if, if I could, I can't hook my computer up, I can't show you the town.
What is the address of the town property, though? If you can give us the address, it'll give us a better idea of where you're actually talking about. So Linda's 235, and what is the address?
There's no way to hook my computer up.
Of that you're accessing the town land to get there, so it gives us a little perspective like.
So while we look that up, though, any, did you, Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have another question, so, just so I can get to that.
It's, it's, I mean, 213, 213 Elm, the bridge, the bridge would actually go through 213 Elm, or, yeah, the technical street address is 213 Elm.
213? So have you spoken to the residents on each side of that entrance?
No, I don't do that. It's, there are no, the nearest resident on the other side looks to be way far away. And the answer is no. I mean, they, we've had, we had the open hearing on, this week, and this, we've had some residents from Pleasant Street involved.
Those residents?
I, I don't, I don't believe any of the people from Elm Street would.
I, I believe Rita was going to call the people directly.
Yeah.
I just don't want to see what happened before. People were like, we didn't get, anybody to talk to us about this.
Like a week and a half ago, she told me she called.
Okay, because that's what upset people, was, well, you know, and I don't want to see that happen again.
I mean, this, we're not going through anybody's yard, the most it is, is, is a parking area on Elm Street.
But that's going to affect people on, on each side of that parking area. I want to make sure that they are well aware of that and, and are involved in knowing about that and feedback about that. And, you know, sometimes when you talk to people ahead of time and you have those conversations, it can ease them more than just finding out about it on Facebook or.
Yeah, no, again, again, Rita told me specifically that she was going to be calling people directly, but I didn't, I didn't follow up to find out, but I, trust me.
All right, Ken.
You're talking about a million to a million-two investment for a $5 to $6 million return on that investment as far as the cost to construct it. Bring it in. You're going to be accessing property that don't currently have access to, which is a beautiful passive recreation area, and you connect to Linfield, West PVD, or Village of. passive recreation area, and you connect to Linfield, West PVD, or a village of short distance, and start connecting the trails to other community. I mean, it's certainly worth, I think, at this point, it's certainly worth looking into the grant application and see what we can get, see how far we can get into the process, you know, as far as coming up with a million dollars, you know, to do it, and again, there may be other grant funds available to, to supplement that. I don't know why you wouldn't, couldn't take an opportunity to take a look, take a look and see if we qualify for the grants and then let town meeting decide if they wanna do it. That's all. And in the meantime, you're gonna be looking for other sources of income to supplement the cost. I'm just trying to bring it, pull it up here. Again, Phil, I know you put years into this, and, and I also recognize that it's not easy for people who are even in close proximity to accept the fact that maybe somebody's gonna be accessing public property that normally isn't accessible or available to them, but, you know, this is an asset that the town acquired with no particular use in mind other than avoiding what was potentially gonna be built there at the time, which was substantial housing proposal. To me, it's a small investment to make, to try and trace down, trace down the grants and then give the town the opportunity to vote up or down on it. So, and again, I don't know what you're looking for tonight, but-
Anything else for Sean O'Leary?
Not at this point.
Okay. Before I give my opinion, I wanna hear from any resident that wants to give a little limited opinion. Phil Moore?
Can I be limited?
I might answer that.
No. Please, the fifth. Pat Fillmore, Twenty Fourth Field, Chris Terrace. Grants you're talking about, are those grants guaranteed?
No, nothing is guaranteed.
Now, and where are our priorities? We have a fire department that we have to take care of, we have bridges that we have to take care of, we have an intergenerational, or at least a senior center to take care of, and we're talking about spending ninety-five thousand dollars already, right?
No, we spent fifty.
Ninety-five thousand dollars minus the eight hundred, uh, eight fifty.
No, we spent fifty thousand dollars a time, what, we spent, we spent fifty thousand less than eight thousand of town money.
Okay, but you had said ninety-five that we-
Because forty-five is from the state.
Okay. And unfortunately, I don't always believe that the MassDOT or the state is going to reimburse us the full amount of money. I, and we've done this before in the past many times, and we don't get the money that we're supposed to be getting. Again, where are our priorities? You sit there and say that we need an intergenerational center, a senior center. We don't get it. But you're gonna spend money on more trails where we already have one up on, um, Swan Pond, we have Ipswich River Park and all that stuff right now? I mean, come on, let's get our priorities straight. Let's take care of the people and the needs of the people, such as the fire department, such as the bridges over on Park Street, Chestnut Street, Boroughs Road. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that this town can do, and we don't need to put five million dollars into some walking path, which only involves, how much space was it of ours? A quarter of a mile?
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. We have, we have a lot of things that we have to take care of in this town for the people.
Hi there, Nicole Coviello, Thirty-One Wright Street. So I've been following this since two thousand nineteen. It kind of popped up as a surprise in the last week or two. Somebody happened to actually, we weren't notified. And again, we're not technically, it's not going through our property anymore, but Linda Smith would be in a butter. It's right next to her, you know, part of her property. She was not notified of this either, and unfortunately, she's not able to be here as you heard, Bill passed away, so, but she was not notified of this either. We went to the meeting on Tuesday, and as of Tuesday, you were talking about the bridge being used for fire access. But suddenly, we went from something that needed to be able to carry a fire truck, and the distance of the bridge was unknown at the time. So it was a hundred feet, five hundred feet, you weren't able to tell us that, but now it's, but back when you were quoted in two thousand nineteen, it was like a two-hundred-foot bridge. You don't even know where it's going, so like, how do you even estimate that cost?
Are you asking a question?
I, I am, like, how do you estimate the cost of it if you, if it's a hundred-foot bridge or a five-hundred-foot bridge? Because you don't really know where you're going over.
The, the most recent number subsequent to the meeting is I went to the consultant, and he's, he has it down as a two-hundred-foot bridge. That doesn't mean it's a two-hundred-foot bridge, because they have to do the planning to determine how long it needs to be, you know, there's the wetlands and there's the gradient, there's a lot of factors that go into how long it's gonna be. We don't know that.
And we don't have any, any soil studies, environmental stuff?
That's part of the five-hundred thousand dollars.
But that would break-
If, if questions go through the chair, I'd just, just a bit-
So, so anyways, we don't have any studies to really give us a sense of like, I mean, it's all, I live right there, it's all water. I mean, it's very wet, and then there's wetlands and marshlands, so it's not gonna be just like a bridge like anywhere else. I mean, it is all wetland. So, and he was talking about the eighty-five hundred, and the eighty-five hundred allows you to finish the feasibility study, but what does that give us, is what the question was. So, so what, like, what, at the end of this feasibility study, does it give us in terms of information about the project?
If the feasibility study wants it to complete, eighty-five hundred dollars. Does it give us every single detail and not pop in the air?
No, it will give, it will not give anything that she's asking for. It will give some minor, some minor updates on costs, so, for the grant, but it, it really, it really, it's really about submitting a new application to MassDOT and updating MassDOT. I mean, we're talking a few days, handful of days of a consultant's time. Her questions are all completely valid, isn't, every one of those questions has to be answered, that, but that costs five or six hundred thousand dollars. That's the first phase of plan.
So, let me ask you. The six hundred thousand, so, so here, here, you know, just hearing a couple, and I'm gonna take a few more comments as well. So, I don't mind getting behind a no harm, no foul, that's, you know, you roll the dice, right? The worst-case scenario, you don't use the grant, I mean, it's like, it's just, it's, you know, we paid you for your effort, it's, it's just like, you know, the labor cost, which is you right now. However, this five, six hundred thousand, do we have to do that no matter what?
No, we don't, no, I mean, you, you could kill the project at any point, so-
But the question is, okay, let's say there's a vote, the majority of this board authorizes to do this grant, meaning, can we just wait for those results or do, or is it that? Because what I learned through my exhaustive experience of SURE is that until the town approves, the, the state won't even give you an idea of what they will give you. And I got asked that question so many times that I could write that part of the, you know, there was-
So, the, the grant application asks, you know, where is, is, are the matching, they ask, are the matching funds for this project committed? And the answer that's going into the application is no, the commitment will come in the October town meeting following the grant, the award of the grant. So, if, if that kills the grant, it kills the grant.
So, but during that period, that phase one, five, six hundred thousand does not need to be spent?
No, no, as a matter of fact, I, I have to submit a budget for the timing of when that, when that money would be spent, and the earliest, the first month I have that as being spent is December, assuming that, that October passes the matching fund.
I think still the main concern, and again, I think it's two things we're looking at tonight. There's the grant where if it does not truly tie us to anything financially outside of trying, I mean, I, I, I mean, that, that's something reasonable. However, I think they, I feel like the presentation was a bit premature, because we don't have those.
Don't have what?
We don't have some of those, I mean, these are some pretty, like, you know, some of the questions that came from the audience.
Can I come up with the grant, though, that you're talking about? So if you, so if we don't take the grant, that would-
So, I feel that that's, I think it seems to be the concern, that there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of what-ifs, and like, I mean, not to equate to projects, but a project of this size, like, you know, we're talking about three thousand plus square feet, should have those answers. I mean, and I'm not an engineer, but I, I feel like, you know, it, it seems that there's still a lot of what-ifs, and this plan is being presented as complete.
No, no.
Yeah, so I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, I, I, no, this is a preliminary plan to, the feasibility study, you know, lays out some general information about the length of the bridge, but all of that has to be nailed down with planning. So the, all, all these questions are perfectly valid questions, but it'll cost five or six hundred thousand dollars to get the detailed answers, that you need to know exactly what this thing is.
How much of a percentage do we owe, do we owe the five hundred thousand, or do we owe twenty percent of it? If you go to October town, excuse me, if you're gonna go to October town meeting looking for the planning stages, what are we looking for?
First, first stage.
The first two stages. How much are we looking for, approximately?
It'll depend on the grants.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's, there's two different percentages. So the, the construction cost is, say, five or six million dollars, and the planning phase is twenty percent of that.
All right, so that's a million bucks.
And then, then you have the grant, which could be up to half a million dollars, but my guess is it'll be less, and then is, the town would have to come up with twenty percent of that. So technically, if, if you got, if you got the maximum amount of the grant, it's twenty percent of twenty percent. But, you know, we could, we could get less than five hundred thousand dollars, and then the question would be, well, does the town want to chip in the difference between what we got as a grant and the, and the full, and, and five or six hundred thousand dollars it's gonna cost? Or what I would probably propose was we scaled, we maybe have three steps in the planning, and, and so we can go back for a grant in another year, maybe two or three years, so we get some of the planning done, go back, wait, wait a few years, go back for another grant, have to get some more matching funds, but we do it over a longer period of time with more grants, so the town doesn't have to come up with as much money all at once.
Right, so in that scenario, so if you're gonna phase it over a different period of time, what would we be asking town meeting for?
We would-
Approximately, twenty percent of twenty percent, twenty percent of five hundred thousand?
If we get a five hundred thousand dollar grant, I would, we would probably ask the town meeting for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If we got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, then, you know, it would probably do be, we'd have to figure that out. We could ask for, you know, only sixty thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars, or we could ask for three hundred thousand dollars to, to try to finish all the planning. I think that's a read that we'd have to, gonna have to make over the summer when we find out that, how much the grant was gonna cost.
So I'm, so we're kinda lucky to know what we're gonna get in the grant ahead of time. As opposed to where before was you had to commit and then hope. So, you know, this is taking it in steps, so it's really a bold risk.
And just saying that if we have that information, like you said, that's a little different, because then no board, or community member for that matter, is making a decision without knowing the monetary cost and whether or not it's worth it, right? Then you're gonna attach a value, like you attach value to anything. So, so if you want, if you wanna direct a few more questions through me, I can do that.
Yeah, just, so in terms of the grant, though, so let's say we go through this grant, I don't have much experience in that world, but let's say we get accepted for the grant, and then we decide we're not going to take it. Does that now render us ineligible for future grants in this scope?
Okay, you, I, you asked the exact same question.
I'm asking it for everyone else that's here, so-
But throw me, everybody yell at me, I'm usually-
Oh, okay. Well, the question was asked on Tuesday. There was, there was, I think people assumed, because they were getting confused between Mass Trails, they're the grant, this, this grant organization, and MassDOT, which is the highway company which actually does the construction. So, Mass Trails is where we're applying, would apply next week, and, and Mass Trails is only for trails. Now, if the question is, if we, if I go through this grant application now, and the town turns it down in, in October, and we turn the money back to Mass Trails, I would expect Mass Trails not to be open for some time to taking another grant from North Reading. But at that point, our, this trail would be dead, and it's not all that likely that North Reading is gonna be submitting another trail grant in the near future anyways. So, but does it preclude other state grants? No, has no impact on any other state grants.
My last question, and I'm done, is the state, so in terms of the grant, let's say everything does go forward, will this grant dictate what we can also, the bridge would give us access, but let's say we wanna put senior center or potential fire station or something else there, does the grant dictate what else can go in that location? Are we limited?
No, and, and again, as a-
Are you sure?
Well, the bridge is limited.
No, but even the bridge wasn't limited.
The bridge is limited.
The scope of the bridge has changed different times.
No, 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 I mean, no, there's no way that it would limit the, what, the other use of their, it would-
Why don't we get, hold on one second. We'll get an answer on that more officially, okay? That I just, I, that's-
I mean, I can certainly, it's easy to ask.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll get a more formal one. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez.
I just, I just wanna clarify whether you are wanting this or not wanting this. Mr. Hertz is a volunteer, has put in so much time to this. It's something that we should look at, I mean, it's a, it could be a beautiful trail for our town, connecting into another trail, you know, that you can go all the way through the North Shore, right, up to Ipswich, I believe, but it goes pretty far, connecting, so it would be a great asset for the town. There could be people, though, I, I was concerned about people knowing and people understanding. I just wanna say, just, everybody should be respectful. This is someone who's put a lot of time in, he, he got pretty badgered last time, and I don't wanna see that happen again. Just keep things respectful to Mr. Hertz. Questions can be answered. He's put a lot of time into this, and it's something that we should know about and should explore.
I think the transparency from the get-go has been really difficult.
So that's what I'm concerned about.
In the surprise, again, like, I wasn't expecting to spend half of my week's evenings at meetings, I'll be honest with you, as I'm still in my work clothes. So, again, clearly, it was because somebody, there hasn't been an LUC meeting in six months. Two of the members were blindsided by what was going on. It was real-time happenings, and that's what I'm seeing, so things have changed even in two days, the scope of the bridge, fire access, driving a fire truck is different than safely getting a, an emergency vehicle if you have to. That's, it's changed. It's an ever-changing thing. So I do feel like I'm trying very hard to be respectful, and I'm trying to-
I understand, and I know, and I, and I feel that from, from you.
Yes, and I understand, I mean, listen, he's a volunteer, I appreciate that, but again, you know, I live right there, people are already walking through my property, and it's only gonna get worse, because you know what? Those trails you're looking at, it's about three minutes from one of my driveways to it. So you know what? People are going to be gaining access from my street because the six parking spots, sixteen's parking spots, again, that depends on what conversation you've had. People are gonna be parking on side streets and walking through my neighborhood and walking through my property, so it will affect them.
Understood.
So, thank you for hearing me.
Understood, and, and that is what this is about, and you can ask a question-
Yes, no, and I appreciate you answering everything to the best of your ability, so thank you.
Mrs. Chairman, I just thought Mr. Griffin had a- Absolutely. I just wanted to add that there was some confusion about fire truck access. What I described on Tuesday, this is, has always been intended for a pedestrian bridge and perhaps a police car or an ambulance. It's never intended to be designed to be as heavy for a fire truck. One of the interesting things about Linfield being involved is with all the fires that we had last fall, right now, there's no way that a fire truck could get into any of this land, either in Linfield or North Reading. It'd be a real problem if, if there was a fire in, in, in this, in this, in this entire area. So one of the things that Linfield is doing is they're doing a deal with Bostick. Bostick's gonna, the, the rail bed actually runs through the plants of Bostick- Bostick's gonna, the, the rail bed actually runs through the plants of Bostick, and Bostick owns a portion of the rail bed just outside of its factory, but there are actual rail trail, there's actual rail lines and, and ties on that. Linfield is gonna dig up all of the rail bed there, they're gonna grade the rail bed, and if there's a fire, in either, potentially in the North Reading portion or in the Linfield portion, a fire truck's gonna be able to get into the rail bed from Bostick. Which, it, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily impact the trail directly, but I think that's important for the whole area, that, that fire access is coming to that area.
So, Mr. Griffin, there was a girl on the chair, and then Frank...
This is Jeff Griffin, thirty-one Abbott Road. I have a question, does anybody in this room or online live next to a rail trail? Okay. Reason why I ask that question is because I know someone who did. It was my sister, she lived on a rail trail, her property was right on a rail trail for over ten years. These are some of the things that happened and some of the things she put up with. Constantly dealing with the police, cutting through her backyard, constantly picking up hypodermic needles at the back of her fence on the trail, constantly calling the police because there were people squatting and tents were going up in the back, people were living back there, people were drinking back there. Now, I know, like, we all wanna believe that that's great, to put a trail through there. But I'm telling you, I know, my sister lived there for ten years, she now, she left where she was, and she now lives up in Groveland because of that. So, that was horrible, that was one of her ten years. So hypothetically, like, you can look at that and you can think that, wow, that's great, it's beautiful, but understand the reality of these things can sometimes not be pretty. They can be very, very ugly. That's all I wanted to do, was share that little bit of information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, Joe, yellow, three, Mahanzalini. Phil, I, I've been on this project area...
Yellow, just, just direct it to me, and I know it's this...
I've been in this project quite a long time. First question I have for Phil is, do we have an agreement for Linfield to join partners? Because that's what you need to do, you need to be together.
Yes.
So do you have an agreement that you can bring to the board, to, to the town meeting and say, we have an agreement? That's number one. Number two, when, when this came out, okay, there was supposed to be, we were going everywhere. Now, it's changed. How much has it changed by? Nobody knows. You keep throwing out numbers, five million, five hundred, two hundred, we have no idea what this project costs. Now, nobody knows here how much this project costs. I built a building down the street here, and I didn't say, oh, Jesus, it's gonna cost me five hundred, it's gonna cost me a million, it's gonna cost me three million. I had the money before I started, so I made sure that I had all my finances in line. You don't build a building or anything without knowing how much it's gonna cost. And you have never once provided with that information. Sorry. You never once provided, you never provided that information, as far as the information. The unique, that's important information. We need to know what the town is gonna spend, and you don't know, you have no idea. And this has been going on for how many years? I have no idea how, how long it's been going on, but I know it's been going on quite a few, okay? And one other thing I just wanna mention, that he turned around, the last time around, which I don't remember, if it was two or three years ago, he did, oh, we gotta get this paperwork, this grant in, in a week. That's what happened. Well, look up the notes, you can look up whatever you wanna look up, but that's what happened. He says, oh, we need to get this done in a week. Because if we don't get the paperwork in to the grant that he's talking about, okay, we're not gonna get it and we're not gonna be able to do the project. But, I would think that that's the first thing you would do, is get the grant done, and see if you get the money, see if they'll give you the money. But if you don't, I don't know how they would be able to get this thing done.
That's what he's doing, though, that's exactly what he's doing. He's gonna try to find out the grant money ahead of time.
But this is, it's the one, he, he's been asking to get this stuff done, gonna ask how many years? How many years has it been? This is not last week or three weeks or two months, this is years.
But we have to have a plan that residents were gonna accept as well. So that's why the, the project has been scaled back to take care of primary access, we have access to it on a scaled-down version from what it was before. So that's where we're at today.
Ask him, he cannot even tell us where this sixteen cars, first it was six, now it's up to sixteen, okay? Where is this place that he's gonna put it? It has to be on Elm Street, because that's the only place...
It's, it's right across from Pleasant Street, we saw that on the map. It's right across from Pleasant Street, it's right where the Smith Bridge is right now, that's exactly where it is.
Across the street?
Yes, across the street, and it's to the left of the access.
So, so, let me just understand this, let me just understand this, you are gonna, people are gonna park across the street, they're gonna cross Elm Street?
No, 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 it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on the Smith property's side, it's on the Smith, it's on, I don't know, that's the south side of Elm Street, south side of Elm Street.
Can you tell us where the starts?
You can tell exactly, we just saw it on the map, but we can go back to that if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I'd like to see it, because I'm still...
Let's go back to the map.
Because I don't know where Smith property is, but I'm sure that it's, that mailbox belongs to...
You and I walked a trail, so I'm...
Oh, I know, I can tell me, I was there.
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused that you're confused, but that's okay.
Well, I'm confused, because I never got any numbers, any real numbers that you can look at. Where's two thirty-five?
We had numbers from before as well. So Pleasant is, Phil, right there, right there, right there. Pleasant's right here? Yeah, yeah, right there. This is, this is where, yeah, sorry, this is...
And where's the mailbox?
I think if you could show that...
The mailbox, I think, is right there, by the T, by, by the, with the arrows, yeah, right where the arrows, mailbox is there.
Can you show the one that has the actual mailbox?
Yeah, show the one that has the mailbox.
The photo, does that, can I help, does that, do you know where it is now?
I, if that's where the mailbox is, yeah.
Not this at all.
So, and, and where's the, where's the parking is gonna be?
I just showed you, I just showed you, I just showed you where parking was gonna be.
Is that private property?
No, it's not private property.
Well, you show me where the mailbox is, it does not belong to the town.
I think Mr. Gilbert is looking for it.
No, town is not, the town is not on the mailbox.
So where are you gonna put the parking?
To the left of the mailbox. To left of the mailbox, down the hill, there's a hill there, there's a...
Well, it, it, which probably, there's a flat set, should I answer, Mr. Chairman?
Answer. Out of that, I'm gonna, so everybody knows, I'm gonna take two more comments, because it was, it was not a public hearing, so this is more...
The town owns the lot, that's to the, if you're facing the mailbox, the town owns the lot, actually, two lots to the left of the mailbox. Parking is gonna go on the town lots that are to the left of the mailbox. Now, the reason that the parking, really, it's totally determined, that, there's a little flat stretch of land that the town owns, that's parallel, that's flat with, with Elm Street.
There it is.
You could probably put two or three cars in there, as it is today in the grass. So, the question is, if there's gonna be more than two or three cars, they probably, there's a very steep drop-off behind there, it's down, and that's why the bridge has to be very long and very flat. What, what, what we've talked about, and we don't have any plans, it's just simply conceptual, is if we needed a bigger parking lot, they'd probably have to, after cantilever, you know, actually create like a mini little bridge, so it would be cantilevered up, and so part of the parking area would be on that grassy area, and part of it would be on a paved, that it'd be a steel structure that would support more parking. But that's, none of that has been determined, that's all gonna be part of the plan.
That sounds wild. So, not to mention that building on wetlands is gonna cost a fortune, it's gonna be a hundred percent on North Reading, and to go to the DP, building on wetlands is not fun, and that parking lot's all on North Reading.
Right, and, and that's another thing, that if, if, if Mass Dodge thinks that you want more than two or three parking spaces, then you're gonna have to have that very expensive parking structure, which, there'd be some planning involved, but the cost would be paid for by Mass Dodge.
Hold on, hold on, he's gotta stick to that. So you're saying that parking lot, even including, whether it's a cantilever or something, all paid by the state?
By Mass Dodge, and that's been discussed with Mass Dodge, they know conceptually that it would be, that, that the parking area, if we wanted more parking, and they want more parking, parking, you'd have to basically build a parking structure.
The issue that should be, that I'm just pointing out, is that that twenty percent might go up with all these unknowns. You know what I mean? There's a lot of state, there's a lot of state jurisdiction to this project that North Reading's just like...
And, 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 and some of that, I mean, it depends on what phase that, that would be, that would be in, it's probably Phase Two, so you would know a lot more after you get to Phase One, but I, I'm not trying to get, that's why people want to know numbers, but you, you learn numbers as you go through these phases. You know, when they finish this early feasibility report, we'll have a little, this eighty-five hundred dollars will provide a little bit more clarity, at least, and, and then you'll get more clarity after you do the Phase One, and then you'll get absolute clarity when you get to Phase Two. But you learn a little bit with these, these phases, and the numbers could definitely change.
So Mr. Gilbert's gonna go, and then after a couple more comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing, that it's not, not Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. Three, Mr. Chairman, to clarify for everybody, there are two pieces of privately-owned land in question. This is a red house with frontage on Elm Street, owned by a last name Carvalho. This is a Smith property with a mailbox is, mailbox is right on the street, the bridge comes down through here, kinda follows, at one point, this property line was further to the west, must be located, because of the speed over the bridges, so that's a Smith property. This is town North Reading, town North Reading, private ownership, long frontage to a house that's, that's further to the east.
Yeah.
There are multiple homes here, there's homes at the intersection of Pleasant and Elm, here, here, there's a home here, homes at Turner, so there are homes, but they're mostly on the other side of the street, they are there. The area we're talking about here, where the parking is proposed, can't see it, but as I think Mr. Hertz indicated, it drops off pretty steep, and so, the way that would be addressed is something that we need to be figured out from an engineering standpoint. But the point I just wanna make is that there are two parcels, they are opposite Pleasant, there are houses here, but they're on the other side of the street. There is a house on this side, but it's pretty far down, although the property line is pretty close by. Does everyone understand where we're at in Canada? Agree that that's an area?
Okay, thank you.
It's all wet, it's all, that, 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 that land between the parcel and the house is dirty wet.
Most of that is private.
Yeah, it's all swan.
Mr. Samard.
Just to go back, what Mrs. Gonzalez says about the respect thing, that's one thousand percent should be always put in play. Lack of transparency, once again, we spoke about this the other day, my house, Mr. Delio's house, is still on the town website, that we were promised by, by Mr. Hertz here, that my, my picture of my house will be taken off, and it hasn't been. He said that he asked two or three times to have it removed, and it hasn't been done. The other night, on Tuesday night, I asked, it still hasn't been taken down, so that's some of the transparency and some of the frustration here.
I need to respond to that, so, I, I heard that, and I went immediately to Danielle, and we took down anything that was posted on the Land Utilization Committee page. So if there's another spot that you're seeing that information, can you please send it to me? Because I don't know where it is.
Okay, 'cause I went to see Danielle today, but she was upstairs today.
Yeah, she was upstairs.
Yeah, 'cause I went there today to find out.
But we purposely took it down and replaced it only with the information that was reviewed at the meeting on Tuesday night with the LUC. I, I think that there's a loss, because that feasibility level study that was done is now not posted online, and there's information that's probably valuable, but it would lead one to believe we're building a, a trail clear across town, which is not land.
To go back, the other night, we got clear answers for five, six parking spots. Tonight, it was spelled out clear as day, sixteen parking spots. So again, the lack of transparency that we get at our meetings compared to what we get with others that know. The, the committee the other day approved an additional eighty-five hundred dollars, which is town money, it's not grant money, it's town money that they still have available. The plan that they're doing going forward, I think it was SPC or whatever, the engineering firm that agreed to do eighty-five hundred dollars, the scope of the work there is, is not, we all know what eighty-five hundred dollars worth of engineering gets you, especially in the grant scheme of, you know, a slope that's, you know, fifteen to twenty feet taller than going into the Ipswich River and things like that. None of the, none of his board members, not one of them, saw the scope of work that was being projected by this, by the engineering firm, that they were voting on. Two of their board members, it was a three to two, two of whom, along with Mr. Hertz, said yes, the other two said absolutely not. They, one abstained, the other one said no, we weren't informed what we're getting for our eighty-five hundred dollars. That eighty-five hundred dollars, like Pat said, can go back to the town, that can go back to free cash. It gets to a point, I think it's a nice project, I think Phil's done some really good work with the town of Linfield, that he's clearly stated that their portion is very, very easy. The thing that he didn't tell you is that he told us the other day, the only way Linfield gets their grant money is if it finishes on our street. The only way the state will give it to it is if it starts on a street and ends on a street. They will not give Linfield, who he's been working very diligently to help, will not get their money if he doesn't get this portion of the project pushed through to end on Pleasant Street, on Elm Street. So, also, the, I think if you, if you go back to the previous plan and you do the scale, that, again, ninety thousand plus dollars into it, if you do the scale, I think it's a little bit more than a two-hundred-foot access bridge, it is one hundred percent wetlands in that area. We asked the other night, have you spoke to conservation? No. Again, that's the same, one of the same issues that he got into, you know, a little bit of controversy last time. Discuss it with our conservation area here, what are our thoughts, you know, is, is there a better mousetrap? Would they prefer to see it go here than, than here? Again, it's not being discussed, it's not an open concept here. The last thing, what, what Nikki said, if there's six spots or sixteen spots, there's, there's paths through the woods, they have to be parking on the right street, like you can't believe, because, like, like, like you said, we have an open area, start and a finish. So if there's six spots here, or sixteen spots here are full, they're gonna park here because they know they can get through there. That's not something we need to create. It's a beautiful fifty acres, probably two-thirds of it is wetlands, why can't we just leave a wetland to a wetland and leave it alone? Thank you.
But I guess my question is why? You know, I, I, you know, you know, why, how does the town have the money right now to, to spend, you know, four million, a million dollars to build, build it and break? You're, you're not making any money, you can't sell anything. I mean, so, so what's the point? You, you mentioned that it'd be nicer if the town had it, but the town is filled up with homes, there's no, no land available. You said, boy, if we had sewer, you know, no one's coming to town because we, they don't have sewer, and every, you know, this is one of the most sought-after towns around. So I don't get it, why, why, can you make a case that why we appropriate that kind of money to build this thing?
We're not appropriating anything.
No, but before you build it, is that the right word? When you sign up on it, see, or use some other word, but, you know, what, what, you know, how, how do you convince me that, that, that this makes sense for the town?
We're not at that step. I think today, and we're, we got a lot of good feedback, it was to whether or not to proceed, or it was worthwhile to proceed at this time for these grants.
But, like the sewer, you cost you three million dollars to find out it wasn't going to, to be cash positive, you spent three million dollars on the front side, getting, getting some other, other information. I mean, why do we have to go to that room and spend all the money? We just look at it and say, hey, this is great, like, like this gentleman said, it's a wetland, keep it there. I, I live on a wetland, it's, it's, it's beautiful.
I'm not saying I support what's here and there, but to give some credence to what maybe Mr. Hertz is saying, or in general, everything I've noticed with town government, if you think you wanna finish your attic, do you just walk up and say, I just know I'm not gonna wanna do it and not get an estimate?
Well, I, I'd have to really wanna do it before I call somebody to get an estimate.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just, I just, Anderson, I, I, Anderson windows come to my, come to my cottage up the lake, they gave, gave me a quote, fifty-five thousand dollars for windows, fifty-five thousand for four windows.
It's a pretty good price, actually, but anyways.
You think it's a pretty good price?
I'll write it down. But again, we're not here to talk about the windows, but I, I, I understand what you're saying, that they're not, so, okay, thank you.
And then the other question is, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The other question is, you know, everything's in percentages. Why can't you come up, and I know there's no two words that are the same, but why can't you say, well, like, building a track is gonna cost forty thousand, forty-seven thousand bucks, and, you know, for sixty feet of bridge? Isn't there something you can come up with, send them a guide, you can tell people what it may cost?
Are you asking?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, please, correct, please. I, I, I don't know. I don't think you can answer that part.
Yeah, I mean, these things are complicated. They probably won't, won't know what the construction, the final construction costs is until you get through the second phase of planning and who actually designed the bridge. In terms of, in terms of give or take twenty percent or thirty percent, that feasibility, that eighty-five-hundred dollars will probably get us a ballpark estimate. But could it be off by, could it still be off by twenty or thirty percent sure?
Definitely.
Sorry to be off, but at least you come up with some, some kind of a baseline.
Thank you.
In the meantime, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna send your window contact.
Just an observation and a comment for the select board. Listening to all of this, the amount of money over the past, maybe just ten years, that we've spent on studies, land that we don't use, we could have a new fire station, a new senior center, and probably a new trail. So maybe when we vote to do studies, we should really look at the details before we approve money just to do studies that aren't gonna go anywhere.
But just, just to clarify, these studies, he's asking for grant money?
Right, well, we.
The, that money town meeting voted for.
Right, well, we.
Not the select board, just clarifying.
But the select board does vote to recommend them.
We can recommend it, but it's up to the town. The town voted for that.
But it's just some, an observation. If you look at all the money that we've wasted on studies, because to be honest with you, I, in my opinion, I don't think this is gonna go anywhere. We've spent over fifty thousand dollars on a study, so it's just crazy.
In my own defense, I've only been on the board for five years.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming anybody in particular.
No, I'm just trying to make some comment at this point.
Saying in general, maybe we should really look at this.
So, uh, we're gonna.
There are people online, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
There are people online, Mr. Chairman.
No. How many?
I think there were five comments.
You can read the comments.
How much has the town already spent on the previous plans? I believe you said approaching ninety thousand dollars. You mean town money and grant money?
About ninety, a little less than ninety thousand dollars between grant and town money.
The old plan, it was two-point-three million dollars to build a bridge in the path of Linfield. Just stated that it'd probably five million dollars now. Why would we spend money for a plan again? I think the answer is that because we have an adjusted route at this point? If I understood that correctly?
I don't know what the two-point-three was.
Okay. I would consider it two-point-three million dollars to build a bridge, path of Linfield.
How much was the previous total?
Including construction or the town's fortune?
Including construction.
Between fifteen and twenty.
Okay.
Fifteen and twenty.
Fifteen million dollars, the initial one.
Mailboxes, which I think we've established. And then a couple of postings as to where, where things are still on the website, but it's just not clear to me how you're finding them. If you just could help me with that, we want to take them down. So wherever you're finding them, they're buried, we can't find them.
I can see where.
Okay, so I'm gonna tee up the motion, and then we're gonna go more discussion.
There's one more thing, I think we need to talk about this.
Before I tee up the motion?
I think so.
Okay, I'm gonna tee up the motion now, go ahead.
Wait, was that all five comments? It sounded like two.
I believe, yeah, two of them were links that were sent for me to check, so I think, I think that's all links.
They want you to read it out.
So go ahead.
I can read the letters and the links as well, like. But I appreciate them being sent to us, though. So this is a public landowner permission form for the Mass Trails Grant Program, which we're providing to me today. Just to be clear, what I would be asked to certify on behalf of the town was that the grant application organization has informed me as the authorized land manager of the project's scope for the above-named project. Consent is hereby given from the land manager for the work to take place on the above-named public property. So for your information, depending upon how this goes, how this goes, that's what I would be saying.
Mr. Massey, I have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and sign a letter of support for a Mass Trails grant to fund continued planning for the revised North Reading Greenway Rail Trail and associated efforts in the town of Linfield.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner, any final discussion? See what I did there? Is that a further?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think we.
Everybody's gonna get a chance.
I think we missed out on some notifications and I, 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 it scares me, the unknown costs, so I'm gonna be voting now.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just in the interest of a full disclosure, that articulate young woman who was addressing the board and the public is my niece, Nicole. So just to let you know, very proud of my niece over here. So Nikki is, is my niece. That being said, I think that there's, there's very little at risk at this particular point to get some more fruitful answers, so that presentation may be presented to town meeting come October, and that with very little invested here, it gets you a lot more answers as to whether or not the townspeople wanna proceed with it or not. To, to just pull the plug now, I, I don't think, I don't think it's that wise. I, I think with all that's been put into this, all the discussions taking place, and I understand, you know, the, the concerns that everybody raises here, but the body politic is, is bigger than the, the group of people in this room here, and other people that have participated over the years have actually appropriated money to embrace a far greater project of this magnitude. So I, I just think, you know, we owe it to town meeting to pursue the, see if the grant is, and again, if the grant doesn't come through, it's dead. If it does come through, then we have a decision to make. So at this point, you know, I say, yeah, go ahead and proceed at this point, and see what it brings.
Mr. Walner?
Man, your, your, your Thanksgiving might be tough. Thanksgiving, just discussions.
Wouldn't be the first one. Yeah, sure. Wouldn't be the first one.
What are any final thoughts?
No, I think it's, again, it's a low-risk decision to move forward, and, you know, we'll just learn more information, and, and I do believe that you're right, there are a lot of people who are interested in this who are not here tonight, and, and I think that we owe it to keep moving forward if it's, if it's low risk, which it is, and it's not costing us hardly anything, so we should keep moving forward.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm just a little confused. Are we voting to apply for a grant, or are we just voting to send this letter?
Apply for a grant.
You're endorsing, you're endorsing this step of, I think that's what's coming out of this. You know, they're gonna submit the grant application, I may be asked to sign off on it. It's not unusual, I mean, you're signing off on a grant application.
But this letter from us is part of the process, without it.
It is.
I heard that it wasn't.
In order to be considered.
No, I, I don't think it's necessary, but I, I think honestly, I'm looking for guidance on this. I'm hesitant to sign this form if we don't feel like we wanna pursue this. That's probably the, the biggest thing at this point. You know, I, I wouldn't.
Well, I, I'm going to, I don't do it all the time, but I'm going to agree with Mr. O'Leary right now and Walner. I just feel, and, and with all respect to all of you who I know that this encroaches on, and I know how you're feeling about it, but there is a bigger picture. As I said to Amy, there was town meeting who voted for money for a trail. There's a lot of people who would like a trail, so I think, I feel like I would be doing it injustice. This is just to, this is not hardly any investment to just go forward and see if we could get a grant, and then it comes to town meeting. So I feel I would be doing an injustice not to push this forward.
Okay, so my little experiment tonight of creating a thin air, a more public forum, was just to see. And I knew they were gone or some discussion, but I don't exactly have a problem with the grant or even going for it. I have a problem with the process, because I feel that, I don't know how this wasn't brought to our attention earlier, and we could've had a public hearing. Like, I just don't even know. I mean, it, it, it just, it's something that's been controversial, and sometimes people just then end up disagreeing with you because like, they feel like they didn't have enough time. So that's where my concern is.
It's been no lack of intent on Phil's.
I'm not, I'm not, no, no, I'm not placing blame, but what I'm saying is.
Because he's not the.
Did unfortunately, the clock get run out, and now we're trying to do something on a two-minute drill that requires a whole quarter. So that's what I'm trying to say, that I, like, it, it's like meaning that, you know, I feel like I've lived in this room in December. We could've probably had another public hearing. I mean, whether you go home at like, you know, ten-thirty or midnight, at this point, doesn't really matter. Everybody's asleep at the house. So I think that, for me, okay, I, I don't know from good faith I can do it. And not because I disagree, and you know, everybody's heard me say a thousand times here, if there's no harm, no foul, why not try? But it's just something where, yes, maybe there's more residents, but the other thing I believe in in this, I used to have a problem with this, and this is why I'm even kicking myself tonight, is that I had a problem when the public speak, when it wasn't a public hearing, because not everybody thought they were gonna be able to speak, and if it's a public hearing, more people show up. So that's my concern, that if there is another side of the coin, come out and let me know. So I just, I, again, it's a process thing. I, and I, I can't, you know, I feel like I've made previous mistakes that I think I could've got more support for another not-to-be-mentioned project because of process. So I just, you know, I'll go, I'll see where my vote's gonna go. But I'll take any more commentary from the board, and then we can vote around. Mr. O'Leary?
Just to your point, you know, there's going to be, depending upon this application, if by chance there's an approval here, there will be ample opportunity for discussion, routes, articles that are gonna be before town meeting with public hearings as to whether or not we're gonna proceed or not. And again, what happens is if we don't appropriate the money, if there's some grant money, we don't appropriate some matching funds, it's dead in the water, and there's plenty of open discussion and availability and time for people's input. What we're talking, what we're being faced with right now is, again, another short timeframe, and I can see that to you, absolutely. But the money's already there to do it, to get to the point where we can file for the grant application, and then you're gonna find out whether you get it or not.
Right.
And if you get it, okay, we have another decision to make. If we don't get it, there's nothing else to make. But if we do get the application in and we do get the money, then we have an opportunity to present it to town meeting, have the public hearings and the public forums, and let the public decide. And again, to Amy's point and everybody else, to Pat's, you know, there are prioritizations that we have to make here. You know, through all the discussions we have, I don't care what the issue is, you know, how do you want your town to look? What do you want it to feel like? What, you know, what type of amenities should we be having and investing in? You know, and yes, we have infrastructure we have to take care of. Yes, we have to build a fire station, those are number-one priorities. But you don't abandon opportunities where you're getting eighty percent matching funds to enhance the quality of life and passive recreation in North Reading. Maybe, maybe not. But that's not for us to decide, it's for us to present for town meeting to make a determination. So to me, at this point, Phil, thank you for your efforts, and knock yourself out, and go ahead. Try and apply it again. This is a far different project than we were talking about, than we were talking about, you know, two or three years ago. And, and again, we have fifty acres of land here that we have no access to for no use, and we have interest in it maybe for other potential uses, for utilities or, you know, put some solar panels there, put a battery, put a battery farm there.
They'll create your access for free. They'll create your access for free.
You know, and, and have someone else pay for the access, and what does the neighborhood get? It's not pretty, you know? What do we wanna do with it? You know, and what do the neighbors really wanna have there? You know, they wanna leave it alone, but that may not be an option. The town made an investment here with a potential future use unknown. And we have a, a public utility that's looking for access to properties such as this, for something that may not be very desirable to the community that lives right in the neighborhood either. So all of those things, you know, we have to, so let's find out what our options are. And then town meeting will decide, and there'll be plenty of time for public input and public information and, quote, "public meetings" that we have to have on our articles for people to discuss it, so.
Anyone else before I go around? Mr. Sua, just wanna bring up that back in May, when we were being asked to put the MBTA, maybe, whatever, MBTA for the June town meeting, our CPC told us seventeen grants. I asked, and I recommended to push that meeting to October to learn more about the law, so the people have more time to learn information. Come to find out that, thank God, we got that time, because we learned that there was actually four grants. This own committee frankly doesn't even know all the details. So you have a gentleman who I agree has done an incredible job, and he deserves to be respected for his volunteerism regardless of any opinion. But you're right, I, I've known that there hasn't been Land Utilization Committee meetings either, and maybe there should have been to continue to update that committee, but if the committee's, the committee itself doesn't understand the full scope, how can, you know, there's, there's risk for the town in October. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm gonna roll call it. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Nick?
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
The chair is, no. Three to two, a motion carries.
I'm not sure what the motion was. I mean, you're, you're saying that.
Whoa, 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 the motion carries.
I know, I'm just clarifying that I think that he can still apply for the grant. I don't think he needed us to do that.
I completely agree. I completely agree. We're also told that we didn't need a vote, I think it's true to start it tonight.
We didn't need a vote.
But that's.
I mean, no, Michael was asking, let Michael explain.
Michael needs to sign that thing.
I can read sign that thing.
So to, to be clear, we came into this with an agenda item because they were looking to advance this project, and the, the grant is only part of it. My bigger concern is advancing this project with a revised route that is going to involve a neighborhood. So I came here looking for a, is the board interested in pursuing this? And now, more importantly, is the board okay with me signing this form that indicates we're gonna commit our land to it? I wouldn't do that.
We just voted to approve the letter of support for the state Mass Trails.
And, and I think the letter shows that we support their pursuing this at this point in time. It gives me instructions to sign this form. I have many of the concerns that have been discussed here, probably chief among which is where the, where the support is for it. And they would not, the, the two times this has come up, they're, they're, that's not coming, that's not rising to the surface, and I hope that it does at some point, down the road, if it's out there.
I think one statement, just for the board, not a question, just a statement. Mr. Hertz told us at the meeting the other day that if it doesn't go street to street, Linfield does not get their grant either. So before you people put your names on this to commit, you have to have a very serious, serious reality of how much this is gonna cost us, two-hundred, three-hundred, quarter thousand for the first stage, because if not, you're really shooting Linfield in the foot. And with the hike that they're on.
You can, and also say luckily, I don't have to sign it.
Hold on again to the vote.
There, there's a conflation of the different grants. There's two different funding sources. There's Mastod, which funds the construction. Mastod has a requirement that it goes speed to street. The Mass Trails doesn't have any.
But here's what I'll say now. The vote's over. It's going forward, because it voted. I suggest that the LUC grab a calendar.
Absolutely.
Here's the thing, I wanna bring this back here for a public hearing, but just like sometimes I speak to other committees and boards that want an agenda item, if we don't have more answers, like, we can't do another two-and-a-half-hour round robin. So again, whatever that needs to be, because I know it's a complicated project, but, and then these answers, so.
But you should, you should, chair to chair, you should talk to the LUC chair.
I would, I'm always open to a vote.
Can you, can you clarify, Phil, who's the one who's on the line?
Oh, no, 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 I, I didn't say I didn't understand.
We have moved on to, that's it. Spent a lot of time, I hope I was able to. Hearing is closed.
Thank you guys.
There's no vote.
No, I, I didn't say that I didn't understand it. That's not what I said.
Phil, thank you. I submitted without, I checked I don't have it, won't qualify.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Mr. Mackey cannot, I have the lights on again, please. Thank you. I also have some sugared mangoes if anybody needs some sugar. But the left, but it's a good deal. See?
Let us look, look.
Here, give the sugared mangoes.
Do I have a sugared mango?
It's actually not bad. Okay.
Thank you very much, Phil.
Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you, Phil.
Enjoy your time.
Mr. Gilberto, uh, Mexican, uh, the Community Compact Grant?
Yep.
So this was, uh, something we discussed at a board meeting in the fall, seeking funding to update the town's upgrade, the town's website. Ultimately, we're not successful, 'cause the program ran out of funding. They reopened a grant round that was not, um, as we're told, not first come, first served. So what you had before you was a, a request to approve our submitting an application for funding, not only for the website upgrade, but also for digitization of public records as well. So it's a two-hundred thousand dollar project that we would be looking at, and we would be seeking state funding for it. It would be matched with a hundred thousand dollars for the digitization of public records that was approved six or so years ago, and still has not been expended, so. The MBTA community's saying it's a bit of an unknown. Right now, we believe we're compliant, and we're gonna be able to secure the funding and proceed, but things may change, but for now, we want to proceed with an application. We hope the board will support that.
Any questions before we go vote?
Right now, we are compliant. So then why didn't you sign the fifty-five thousand dollars in the CMS?
We weren't at the time. It wasn't until this, until the regulations had to be reissued, so. And that's still not, that's still unsettled business.
Can I have a motion, Mr. Massey?
So this would be a hundred thousand dollars for, a hundred thousand dollars from an existing allocation.
This is, this is two hundred thousand dollars, and it would be a, a state grant program matched with a hundred thousand dollars of our own existing appropriation, not new money, money that's already been authorized.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the submission of a C community compact grant, application for funding to update the town website and to authorize the chair to sign associate membership.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Yes. I think this... So, a couple things. Dwyane, I have it here, actually has all of our names, but this is the support of Greenway?
I believe that's it.
Okay. I thought you need to sign on.
I have, he handed me a form tonight that I need to sort of sign, and that's why I read the clause out loud for you.
Sorry, please.
Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Mr. O'Leary, uh, appointment, uh, library trustees, whenever you're ready, Mr. Massey. Thank you.
Appointees, appointments, uh, library trustees, Mrs. Gonzalez as the chair. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, appointing names for appointments as associate members of the library trustees, for terms to expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. There are two opening. We have, uh, one recommendation tonight for Sarah Harrington.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner, liaison?
Uh, yes, so, uh, I spoke with Jennifer Little Thompson, um, who's the chair, and she is recommending Sarah Harrington, who is a former library trustee, who had left for personal reasons and is willing to come back. And I believe, believe I saw that she's on here. I don't know if Jennifer is. Sarah is on here. She would like to say anything. She would be welcome to.
Harrington, would you like to say anything?
The other names, the other names of the motion. You're supposed to be following the motion.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah.
Um, yep, I did leave for personal reasons, and I'm excited to, um, be back as a trustee of the group. Thank you for being me.
Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I think we needed to read the other names.
Did you see other names?
Oh.
On the motion?
Sorry, go on, okay.
Sarah Harrington, Francis Toniguzon, Robert Barkos, Akamaman, and Edward Baye. I apologize if I was pronouncing.
And, um, just for the record, all those people have been contacted, and, um, for whatever reasons, were not interested, so, um, Sarah is on the main.
So there would still be one associate membership that could see available?
Any further discussion? You know, Mr. O'Leary?
Sarah Harrington.
Mr. Walner?
Sarah Harrington.
Mr. Massey?
Sarah Harrington.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Sarah Harrington.
And the chair is Sarah Harrington. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome back, and thank you for your volunteer.
Mr. Gilberto?
The next item is the second reading and adoption of, uh, policies that we discussed in the last meeting to update board policies relative to the town administrator to align with contractual agreements.
Is there a motion?
Should be one in the package.
Is it a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the second reading and adoption of amendments to select board policies two point six, two point seven, two point eight, four point two, and four point three, and to incorporate the revised policies into the select board policy book.
Your fave.
Oh, I love it. This is a great, this is a great subject.
Come on, some humor. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner, any further discussion?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna vote no, because I asked it the last time I read these, that I believe that, uh, there is nothing in the contract that refers to, um, vehicle identification. So I, I, I don't see what we're tying together. I'm doing this for the, for the best interests of process and procedures. And I have sent several, several other policies that we do not practice at this time. I believe it's not all the board, and at least town administrator is aware of the policies that we do not practice, so maybe there's another agenda item in the future. We can go through this same thing and, uh, change some of these policies, as I recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Under the meeting minutes, we're gonna do the December sixteenth. However, um, we're going to do the January sixth ones at the next meeting, and we will still be compliant with the open meeting law. So we're gonna pass over the ones for January sixth, and we're gonna go for the December sixteenth. Please, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes of the December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town administrator report.
Mr. Chair, through you, we have a handful of items to report tonight. First, the auction for fourteen Audubon Road and an proportion of eight Audubon Road was completed. There were two bidders, and the properties were sold for fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to Audubon North Reading LLC, Daniel Brown, manager. Second, the fire department submitted a regional grant application for personal protective equipment through FEMA's assistance to the firefighters program. We did so with the, uh, city annuity report. A ten percent match would be provided from, through the fire department's budget if awarded, and a formal agreement, potentially in the form of an intermunicipal agreement, would be crafted if the grant is awarded. Third, the state executive office of public safety and security and the Department of Fire Services awarded the fire department a nineteen thousand dollar grant for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five for the firefighter safety equipment grant program. And finally-
I can comment on that last one. Mr. Gilberto, just wanna, uh, through you, to chair, just wanna thank our representatives, Tara and Brad Jones, for being able to secure that nineteen thousand dollars for our fire department, understanding our governor and the state wanted to actually remove, uh, grants to our fire department. So again, Mckev, what will you vote for in the future? Thank you.
Absolutely. That was just a random vote.
Finally, fees for weights and measure services are being updated to reflect the municipal market. I attached a copy of, with a comparison, including the new fee schedule and a projection, projection ruling out. You're picking up on the trend. We're asking departments to update their fees, um, to reflect their cost of services and the market around us. Um, at some point, we're gonna take all that information and try to project how it may impact our revenues for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six in the form of additional revenue. And that concludes my, oh, no. One final comment, I think folks may have seen on social media, and I did email to the select board as well. Uh, firefighter John Burt took a provisional promotion to the rank of lieutenant to serve as the first fire prevention slash day officer for the community. Uh, certainly appreciate his willingness to stand up, um, and, and take this job as the first person in it, and we look forward to, um, his development in that position. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any questions?
Congratulations to John Burt. Well deserved and good hard-working firefighter.
Can I have a final motion, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See everybody Monday.